Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the November 12th Special Board Meeting for the Concord School Board. Tonight, we will be discussing the mode of operating our schools between the holiday periods of Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year's. We'll start off, we do have a quorum here present, so this is not considered an emergency meeting, but we will start off with Ms. Higgins. Would you please take the role of those who are present?
Yes. So Gina.
I am here.
Tom.
Here.
Pamela.
Here.
Jim.
I'm here.
David.
I'm here.
Danielle.
I am here.
Liza.
I'm here.
I'm here.
And Chuck, Rush, are you here yet?
I saw him up there.
Um, I see him speaking, but Chuck, we can't hear you.
I see you, Chuck. It's okay. So we have nine members.
So all nine members of the school board are present.
Nice.
Did you mention Pam?
Yes, we did mention Pam, but I didn't pass her the microphone, so we have to just let her know. But yes, Ms. Walsh is here as well. So all nine members are present. We're here to discuss tonight the method of operating our schools with regards to the pandemic and the period between the Thanksgiving and actually New Year's holiday period. We had an instructional committee meeting on November the 9th, which addressed, or November the 10th, rather, which addressed this. It was an open meeting with comments from the public and for a report with regards to that meeting.
Jim, sorry over here.
Go ahead.
I can just see on the chat that they're saying that they can't hear you. I just wanted to make sure.
They can't hear me, Josh. Can they hear me?
She said thank you.
Okay. How about Chuck? Can we, can you hear us, Chuck? Chuck, can you hear me? Hmm. Chuck, can you hear me? Give me a thumbs up. He can hear me.
We can't hear him.
We can't hear him.
He says only a little bit.
Okay. And the volume, I've indicated that the volume of my mic might be a little low because no one.
Oh, he was.
Yes, I'm remote, and I'm having trouble hearing you guys, too.
Okay, so some of the remote people are having trouble hearing me, and I usually have a voice that most people don't ever say that about me, so is there anything we can adjust here, Josh?
I don't know, yeah, or you said you used the device for the.
Can you hear us, Chuck? Can you hear us okay?
That's, that's better. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear Chuck very well.
All right, good, good. I think we're better. I think we have overcome.
Okay, and I will speak as loudly as my mask allows.
Beautiful. Thank you, and I'm going to mute myself now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chuck, for your feedback, and thank you to anyone out there who can't, who had a difficulty hearing us. So tonight's meeting is to address the mode of operation for our schools in the district during the period from Thanksgiving to New Year's in light of the COVID-19 pandemic that we are all experiencing. And so, one thing before we start, I want to be sure to let everybody know that, you know, this meeting is available on Microsoft Teams. You can go to the board webpage, and it gives all the instructions for connecting. You may connect through by phone. You should be able to watch this via Concord TV. And Josh, are we on YouTube tonight?
We are.
We are on YouTube Live tonight, too. In addition, you may send any questions to ConcordInfo@SAU8.org during the meeting, and we will monitor that and read that aloud. I want to make it clear that we don't monitor the chat function of Teams, so if you want to ask a question, you're, you're better to use one of the other methods. And I, I will ask anyone who is participating on chat, and other Microsoft Teams people can see that, that you please follow responsible chat etiquette and, and make your comments in accordance with that. But as I said before, we are not monitoring that chat function, so there will be a period where we will take input from the, the members of the community that are present here tonight, as well as those who are participating remotely. So that period will be coming up, but at this point, I would like to ask Chairperson Higgins from the Instructional Committee to report the results, or at least a summary of what occurred at the instructional meeting earlier this week. So Ms. Higgins, if you'd be so kind.
Thank you. So we met Tuesday evening. We spent roughly three hours listening to a presentation from school administration, and then comments from board members and questions, and lots of comments and questions from the community. I must say, all comments and questions were relevant and important. I feel that we did the best that we could, administration and school board-wise, to address them. And I will say that after the culmination, when we presented a recommendation to go into remote, the Instructional Committee did not come to a decision one way or another. We were tied, two votes remote, two votes not. The "not" hasn't been defined yet, but half of the committee was not comfortable with the final vote. It was probably most eloquently summarized by Mr. Kroto that you can spend 15 minutes listening to the reasons remote makes sense, and yet then you feel completely solid that remote's the answer. And then you spend 15 minutes listening to why we need to remain hybrid, and you realize, you're right, we need to remain hybrid. And so I feel that the committee's culmination of the evening is reflective of society, of all the, all the, all the sides of this issue. It's new and uncharted, and we're all bringing what we have to the table to make good decisions. So we come to this meeting without a recommendation to vote upon. We come to this meeting ready to analyze the situation more and to come up with a plan for vacation, which will happen tonight. That's the sole purpose of this meeting. So I feel as a board, we come in very well-balanced, with opinions and thoughts and numbers and facts on both sides.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Superintendent Murphy, do you have anything to, that you'd like to add at this time?
No, I really don't have anything to add, except that, as you know, my recommendation to you was that we, that we remain in hybrid for as long as we're able to. Given the statistics that we displayed last Monday night, we use that as evidence relative to the reasons why I'm making that recommendation, so that's a starting point. But I certainly respect all of the input, in addition to the input that we received on Monday night, I certainly, and I know that Donna did, too. We received a lot of feedback from the community, and we're appreciative of that. That's what helps us to, to make the right decision for, for our students.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. I was just thinking.
Oh, no, thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. At this point, I would just ask if there are any questions for either the Instructional Committee or the superintendent from other board members? And then following that, we will open up for public comment, and then follow that with discussion from the board and, and any motions associated. So does anyone here have any questions they'd like to ask the superintendent? Mr. Kroto.
So Superintendent Murphy, there's been talk about the matrix, and I have my own personal feelings about that, that I, but I, I think that it's important for us to think about if, if, it's a big if tonight, we were to decide to stay in school, what is our, what would be, and what are your plans for making the new bar for us to say, "Okay, enough is enough, we're closing down"? And thank you.
Thanks, Tom. That's a great question. Of course, that came up a lot relative to the matrix, and as you know, the matrix was used as a guideline for us. It was one of the many points of data that are, that we used in determining what was the right model to use as we provided education for our students. Obviously, as you know, things have changed over time since we did that. I can tell you right now that the state has changed their matrix from the one that we used as a model back in September, so my, I guess my short answer to that is, is that we want to look at a new matrix. We didn't do that before the meeting on Monday night, because we didn't think that that was a fair thing to do. We didn't think all of a sudden we changed the rules right before the meeting. That wasn't, in my eyes, that wasn't a fair thing to do. So we left it, but we also know that we need to look at that matrix again based on the data from the state. Let me give you an example of how it changes every single day. Before I left the office this evening, we got a new, it was actually a, from the governor's Twitter account, a tweet indicating that they've changed the travel guidelines. And so you can travel out of, out of state, and instead of being quarantined for 14 days, which is what we would have asked our families, right, our students, to do, it's now you can quarantine for 14 days, or you can quarantine for seven days, take a COVID test, get a negative response, and you can come in after seven days. So already, the, the rules change so frequently, just given the, you know, the position of the, of the executor, right, which is the governor, along with all of the data that we gather. So does that answer it, what our expectations are?
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Beautiful. Um, I, I guess, just a couple of questions. I was not at the meeting Tuesday night, and to Superintendent Murphy's point, the guidelines change rapidly, and they vary from state to state, certainly being for me in Massachusetts and New Hampshire, and it makes, makes things confusing. I guess, and I don't want to in any way put Superintendent Murphy on the spot, I guess, but I guess I probably am going to, to a degree, so I'm giving my apologies in advance. With that said, could you summarize briefly, because I don't want to take up everyone's time, summarize briefly the reason you feel we should remain in a hybrid mode, but in addition to that, are there any reasons that you feel, or any points that you feel that would be advantageous to be in a 100% remote mode? So I guess my concern is, and you know, I usually come into these meetings with a pretty good idea of kind of where I land, and I don't know where I land. So this is one night, I'm very much, and you know, I think it was Mr. Kroto who summed it up, for 15 minutes, you could listen to the reasons for hybrid and be behind that, and for 15 minutes, you could be behind remote. I know the matrix, and thank you for answering that, and I certainly understand that, and that makes sense, Superintendent Murphy. I know in feedback from, from parents and people in the community, the matrix comes up repeatedly. With that said, and it does change, can you just kind of outline why you feel briefly for myself, as well as for those people that don't attend the Instructional Committee meeting, why you feel we should be, be in a hybrid model at this point? And then if there's also anything, again, that is, makes you think maybe we should be in remote in full transparency, what are your thoughts in that regard? Thank you.
I hope I collect all your thoughts there. If I didn't, please let me know, but let me start.
No, I've ramble on too long. My apologies.
That's okay. Let me start with the hybrid and why I'm recommending that. First of all, the students that, you, you know that from the very beginning, we had anywhere from 75 to 80% of our families who indicated that they wanted their children in school in a hybrid model, so consider that. Right now, I would say it's around 25, 75. 20, 25% are remote and 75% are in hybrid, so that tells me that families want their youngsters in school. Second is our attendance. Our attendance is far better in, not far better, I don't want to exaggerate, our attendance is better in a hybrid model than it is in the remote, so when we do a daily attendance, which you know is mandatory, that we must take attendance to make sure kids are with us. So I know that the hybrid has, has a very good attendance. We noticed a little bit at Runlet, had dropped off a little bit at middle school, so we're addressing that issue. As of Monday, I, we, the district had six positive cases of COVID-19, six. We have over 4,000 students, and none of those six, six cases had any transmission. In other words, it didn't go from teacher to student, or student to teacher, or student to student, and we know that from the contact, contact tracing. So again, I think that my, the evidence that I have, it demonstrates to me that we have created very, very, very safe environments for our youngsters. Are they the absolute perfect, safest, and without a doubt, guaranteed? I know people want to guarantee. I can't do that, but I can tell you that based on that data, I think they're, they're safer place for kids to be and in school. Now, I just added one this morning. We, we got an update, I'm sure you know I sent a letter out this morning, or early this afternoon, that we did have a seventh case out at Beaver Meadow, and we're currently working with the Health and Human Services to do any contact tracing. I don't know if there will be any. Based on the data that we received, there probably will not be any. The biggest other, the other question that we have that really is the one that is, is important is staff, and we know that, will we have available staff? Because without the staff, it just doesn't happen, right? There's always two elements that are important in our work, and we'll never forget this, the teachers and kids, and that's what makes this work. And so, of course, those two things. I know attendance is good on the students, so what does it look like for our teachers? And we, we, we queried the teachers to find out what their travel arrangements would be over the holidays, and we had, for Thanksgiving, we had 36 professional staff. That includes classroom teachers as well as support staff, speech and language, OTPT, guidance counselors, all of those folks as an administrator. And we also had 23 support staff. Now, this is just an initial survey. We don't know how actual that is, but the question is, can we run a school? Well, if you look at the reports and you look at the information that we have, based on the, all of the guidance we get for Health and Human Services, teachers are considered, teachers and support staff, people who work in this business are considered essential employees. And with that means that they have the liberty of, of a waiver relative to the quarantine. Now, you've got to be very careful here. If you read the governor's orders, they, they can come to work, and they can work, but that's, that's it. I mean, that doesn't give them the right to be out and about and at restaurants and other places, because they have to quarantine. The only place they don't have to quarantine would be coming to work. So I knew I had the staff to be able to continue that work. Then I said, "Well, maybe it's just us. What's our other districts doing? And how are they doing? And how are they managing?" And I've, I did, I was involved with a group of Class L, which is large schools, which I think is important for us, and I talked to some superintendents, Gostown, Bedford, Litchfield. I did talk to our neighbors in Boe, in Merrimack Valley, Hawkington, all will continue to be in remote. Talked to the superintendent, actually, today in Portsmouth, and he is continuing to be in.
Hybrid.
Will continue to be in, not in, in remote, in hybrid, I'm sorry. So all of those schools remain in hybrid, with one exception, one large school district has made a decision, that's Londonderry, to go in, go to remote for the holidays. I'm still waiting to hear from a few. I haven't heard yet from Manchester. I know Nashua continues to be in, in remote. Pinkerton won't make a decision until December 1st, so, but I think that we tend to be in the same alignment as other school districts, so I felt like our decision wasn't off the rails, if you will. And finally, Chuck, it's about kids, and I have so many emails about families that talk about the importance of kids being with their teachers. And given that we have a safe environment, I have a plea from parents that their youngsters need to be in school. Remote hasn't been a positive experience for them. Now, I'm going to flip to remote, because you're really putting, you're really making, you're really making it difficult, but that's okay. I get that. I know. Of course, there's some youngsters that have done very well in remote. Let's not, and we give parents choice. We've already provided for a number of parents in elementary school, those children have remote classes. We've developed remote classes at grade levels, so that youngsters can continue their, their learning in a remote environment. And at the middle and high school, they've been remoting into the classes. They don't have a separate, like a remote class in sixth grade. They are actually just going in on their Zoom platform and joining the class. The question was asked, and Donna did some work this, this, today, to answer some questions that Mrs. Walsh had around numbers, so we do have that information, and I'm sure Donna will share it, and how we might provide for those families that want to continue with remote. So we're trying to look at that. So I think, given the fact that we provide the remote for the families that want it, and for the families that want hybrid, that's their choice, just like remote is a choice, we've offered both.
Thank you very much. I may have other questions, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crush. Other questions from the board? Ms. Walsh, let me.
Like you, I start from a place where I think most kids and most families are better off with our schools open at least two days a week, and it is a safer option for many kids. That being said, I am uncomfortable that we haven't addressed the matrix issue, because parents felt like they were making a decision based on one piece of data and one commitment. And for elementary school parents at least, they are being told, "We're not keeping that commitment, and you cannot change to remote until January." I think we have to figure out how we can let families change earlier, given the change in the matrix. Is that something we can do? I know the numbers that Mrs. Paley shared with me earlier seem small, although it also appears that some families were just being told, "No, it can't happen," so they weren't making a formal request.
Donna, do you want to share those numbers? Can you do that? I think everybody would like to hear those. All right, we can, if there's another question, I.
Okay, well.
Well, Donna looks for that. You got it?
When Ms. Paley is, Ms. Paley is ready, we can.
Okay.
Address that item. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Other questions from the board? Ms. Pointier.
Thanks. To Pam's comment, I, that's where I'm coming from. When we set out the matrix, we said, "This is what you're basing your decision on." And if families are now feeling uncomfortable with the decision, not because they made the wrong decision, but because the matrix is, is not being followed in the way that people thought, then I really think it behooves us to find a way to accommodate remote students. And I know that that may be an impossible ask, given the realities of teachers and classroom space and so forth, but I think we owe people that. I wanted to mention one other thing. We got a letter today from Dr. Patrick Fox, and he suggested something that I don't think we talked about. Get my calendar out here. His suggestion was to plan to go to remote the week after Thanksgiving, which is when people would be quarantining, and then go back into school on December 14th, which is a full two weeks later, and then have the usual holiday break, quarantine for two weeks at the end of the holiday break, and then, that is, sorry, go full remote during that period, and then go back into the classroom. The beauty of this, in my opinion, is that it maximizes the amount of hybrid time we can do without enacting this kind of teachers are essential workers argument, which I find to be a bit disingenuous. I think, you know, essential workers are, are, if they're traveling, it's essential that they travel. They're traveling for work. I don't feel comfortable asking someone to come back into the classroom if they were traveling for pleasure, which, you know, we, we can't tell people not to travel for pleasure, but I don't feel all that happy sending my children into classrooms with people who've recently been to Disney World. So I think that was everything I had at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pointier. Ms. Higgins?
As a school teacher, one of my least favorite things was getting observed, because your principal comes in and you have to have this lesson plan written up. And you plan it out carefully, and you try to predict what might happen in the lesson. And then for me, I'm, I'm much better at shooting from the hip. I'm very intuitive. I could change a cross-country workout mid-workout, because I saw in front of me that what I had planned meticulously was no longer working. So when I was being, when I was being observed in the classroom, I would often say, "Look, if this doesn't go well, I'm going to switch, because what's on the paper doesn't make sense anymore." Believe me when I say, I understand the mistrust in our community. We've had a lot of years of, of reasons to not trust our administrators and our school board. The matrix was a good guideline for what we knew. Think back to when that matrix was committed, was completed. It was September. No one had gone to school yet. The state, the government, districts were trying to put together what they thought would indicate the need to close. So yes, we said to our parents, "Here's our guideline. This is what we'll follow." My feeling is that we need to take a big breath and really look at the matrix. Let go of feeling not listened to. Doesn't mean you don't feel that way, but put it aside for a moment and say, "Oh, yeah, this was a great lesson in September, but this part here doesn't make sense anymore." And when I look at the numbers and the reality and what's happening, this transmission over here shouldn't affect this group of students over here. I'm not saying that we should not be held accountable completely for what we say we're going to do. That's a board commitment. It's an administrative commitment. I would just ask that we shift for a moment to what makes sense now. Holding Kathleen accountable for a decision that she's making in good faith is necessary, but shouldn't cloud the fact that we could use a lot more accurate data to keep our children safe. My second thing is, I liked the compromise idea, and it was in my head as well, of maybe not having eight weeks of remote, but a couple of weeks remote back, a couple of weeks. I think, I think we have to keep our minds open to all the different ways that we can keep our kids safe. But anyway, I just, I just felt that we need to look at that matrix in a different way. And, you know, a good, good educator's can look at a lesson plan and see that it's failing, and, and that's sort of how I feel. And that's sort of how I feel about the matrix.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Ms. Smith?
So, I also, following Liza and Barb, had seen that email, and sort of put a second thought in my mind about how we could do the remote scheduling. I think in a perfect world, have a couple of weeks on, and I think it's just one week, maybe, maybe a week and a half, back in school would be great, I think, for parents. I think that's too much inconsistency. I think if we're gonna do remote and commit to being remote for the holidays, that it just needs to be that block of time. That's where I am at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Cannon?
Sorry. So, I know that I was the movement of the motion that did not pass at the Instructional Committee, and I know, and I've heard from a lot of people, that they were shocked with the dates that I picked. And so I wanted to back up for a second and explain why I picked those dates, and I was actually conservatively wrong. If you wanted to quar, if you were, if you were planning to take your family to go see your great Aunt Bertha at Thanksgiving, today was the last day that you could be in school, before having to quarantine for 14 days to go visit Aunt Bertha. So when I suggested that it be the Monday before Thanksgiving, I was actually off by an entire week. The point was to allow people to be able to quarantine, to go see their family members, and then come back and quarantine here. The point of not going to remote, and then back, and then remote, and then back, was that, I agree, each of those switches is a massive, massive, both psychological and organizational transition that is incredibly difficult on everybody. Parents, kids, teachers, administration, support staff, everybody. So I wanted to be clear about why I chose those dates. And in fact, I was, I was unfortunately not conservative enough in my, in my counting. But it wasn't for the point of just shocking people into, "I think we should just be remote." There was a purpose behind choosing those dates, because I do believe that there is value to being able to see your family members if you think you can do it safely. There are a lot of people who have not seen their family members in 11, well, 10, nine months. You don't necessarily know their health status, you don't necessarily know what their health status is gonna be come April. And I get it, that a lot of families want to go see their family members. And so, my attempt at that motion was to try and kind of split the difference between keeping our communities safe and keeping our communities' out-of-town family members I still think that's the way to go. I still think the safety of that is the way to go. I'm not saying we should go remote for the rest of the school year. But while people are desperately missing their family members over the holidays, I just think, you know, we need to try and protect other communities, and we need to try and protect our community. And we need to be as responsible about travel that is going to happen irrespective of what we decide. So we need to be as responsible as we can to keep our community as safe as we can.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Thank you. After Tuesday's meeting, like, I think the rest of us, I was leaving with a lot of uncertainty. Certainly don't want to create a situation where people are unsafe. And the Monitor, for example, today reported incorrectly that we have active case. We don't. But I get a lot of responses from people. Remote has some real advantages in terms of, instructionally, in terms of being able to meet a large number of people's needs. But it also has some disadvantages that I, I sort of realize more as I queried a number of people in the community. One is that we're functioning on a erroneous sort of principle here, is that, you know, with all due respect, Gina, that, you know, families need to go visit their grandparents. That's great. That doesn't equate with when they come back to school, they're gonna transmit the disease. Schools are one of the safest places to be. When I went to the state website, you go down the list and see how many transitions, how many transmissions are in the schools. 00001, 00003, 001, you know, so, just because you go visit grandma does not necessarily mean, when you come to school, that you're gonna transmit that disease if you're wearing a mask and you're being responsible. We had that experience. It was with our student being sick, had the virus. None of it was ever transmitted to anyone at the school. So I don't believe the premise that people are going out in the community, if the community, as we know, we're getting a larger spike in, in numbers right now, equates with necessarily more cases in school. It just isn't, A does not make B necessarily. And I am, I am worried, and I'm being very honest with you, that with remote, there is a much larger number of neglected children and abuse. We can say, "Well, you know, if people are gonna decide, you know, we'll, we'll go remote, and these kids will be fine, and they'll be safe." No, they won't. People don't have a choice whether they go to work or not, many families. They don't have a choice. Some of my, one of my families said, "Well, we put our kids in private school, so, and they're going." So I'm thinking, "What's their plan?" "Oh, they're fully in class. They're fully going in person." And so you talk, and so they, they're pulling their kids out of school so that they can go to a school in person every day. But they can afford to do that. The vast majority of citizens in Concord are not that. They're people that work every day, whether they're essential workers or not, and they don't have a choice. And these kids, I worry, are, are out in the community where it is being transmitted. More kids are gonna get COVID if, if we go remote, I feel, so I want to speak
Did you see I took off my sweatshirt and was sleeping?
I mean, that's what, you know, I came to a conclusion, and that really makes me worried. We'll have all these kids that will be remote, that will be out in the community getting COVID. Whether, when they come to school, the odds, the odds are better, that they'll be safe. You know? And I do worry about abuse and neglect, the increase of that under a remote model. And so, it's hard, you know, but schools are safe places, on a lot of levels. And for our average and working-class citizens, they desperately need our schools to be open. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parker? Mr. Crush, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, you know what, as I sit here and listen, there are no good answers to any of this, you know? We've gone around the table, I do agree, we can't, we can't go back and forth, and have, you know, probably scientifically, and from an epidemiological standpoint, maybe it made sense to do two-week year, a week year, a week year, but I don't think for families, for kids, I think that's a tough transition every time. So I think that's hard. I think, you know, in listening to, hearing about kids and being in school, you know, I worry about the kids at home who, if we go 100% remote, that's a big if, I worry about the kids at home, and the abuse and neglect, and, and wonder, you know, have we explored outside-the-box thinking of, of if we do go remote, how to check on those kids? I also worry if we do the hybrid model, you know, DHHS is reported by MUR, it's about five days behind in contact tracking, due to the recent spike of cases. Have we explored, they actually reported that some businesses and restaurants, and they actually mentioned schools are doing a better job of contact, their own internal contact tracking. So have we explored that, if we do go hybrid? But when it comes down to it, and look, everybody, we're all getting COVID fatigue. You know, we want to see our grandmothers, we want to see our family, trust me, it affects me very personally, and my family. My question, or kind of my thought is, we don't know the answer to any of these questions. We're all sitting here playing hypotheticals, so we're, and we can, we can stay here till tomorrow, probably arguing the pros and cons respectfully to each other, but at the end of the day, I think it comes down to, for me, to, for student safety, and for, and for parents, and for parents' safety. I mean, you know, we don't, we can say that, you know, there's been no transmission in the schools, which is, which is good, but on the other side of the coin, you know, has, has a, has a student gone home and given it to their grandparent? And the student's asymptomatic, and we have no reason. We don't know the answers to these questions. And that's what makes this a challenge. So I think I'm coming down on the side of, if we do, if we go hybrid, I think we're going to have to think about things differently, just like the matrix. You know, with our hybrid model, we were doing X, Y, and Z for screening. It appears to be working. However, is it gonna be working in two weeks as the cases spike up in the community? If we go remote, what things are we gonna put in place to at least try, and the operative word is try, and it's not gonna be perfect, to, to check on, to check on kids? But I'm very afraid, I'll be honest with you, I'm very concerned, and as far as teachers being essential workers, you know, I understand they meet the definition of essential workers, but you mean to tell me they can go out, they can't go out and grab a pizza, because we're afraid they're gonna infect the community, but they can go to work and infect our kiddos? So my question is, if we decided with the teachers that are planning to travel, if we decided to, say, those teachers have to quarantine, even though they don't have to by the governor's order and DHHS regulation at this point in time, and the operative word is "at this point in time," would we have enough staff to go hybrid? If we told every teacher that's traveling, "You've gotta quarantine for 14 days, or quarantine for seven days and then get a COVID test," if that's the latest direction from the governor's office, would we have enough staff, would we have enough staff to say, to have a hybrid model? Or do we need all those, or do we need all those staff back? And that's, that's a question.
Thank you, Mr. Crush. Mr. Krodo had a question next.
So, Chuck, thank you. The nice thing about being on the Concord School Board, at least at this current juncture, is that we can disagree, and we still go along our merry way, because we have a trust that we're all thinking in the same direction, maybe just differently. So, I'm gonna tell you right now that, after having thought about this, and thought about this, and talked and talked and done all the things, I want to go, I want to continue a hybrid model through the holidays. And I, and it's based on this, that I know that, it's always been said that our sped kids need to be in school one-to-one, and I agree with that, of course, and I don't think that we should deny them that. And, and trust me when I say that there isn't a person in this room, and I know it for a fact, that doesn't have students and teacher and parent safety utmost in their mind. But, we know in life that, and I don't want to be a lecturer here, but, I took, I take my grandson to the rifle range, I know there are inherent dangers there, but I do things to keep it at a minimum. When I teach my grandkids water skiing, I know there are inherent dangers there, but I do things to keep a minimum. So today I called Matt Cashman, and I said, "Matt, just between you and me, tell me, tell me"
Thank you for sharing.
"Do you need anything from our school board that would enhance making our schools even safer?" And he said, "Tom, flat out, you don't have to put it on the QT. We've got it all, and we're doing it all." He feels totally safe in that they have the proper spray equipment to get it done, they have the training to get it done, they know which pieces to go for and look for. And he said, "I'm in the buildings five days a week, and I'm seeing that things are happening in the right way." That was reassuring. I think about the CRTC students, and how important it is for them to be in person. I mean, that's what they do. That's what they do. Can we be sure that our protocols are in place that are ensuring their safety 100%? No. But as it has been right now, it's been okay, and I don't want to jinx it, I'm a little superstitious. We are and we have been in hybrid, and I believe the few, six, possibly seven, cases that we have, have been brought to us, not given by us. We can't stop that. We can't stop that. I don't even know if we can stop giving a case if it happens too, but, thank goodness, that hasn't been the case so far. We can still, at any time, pivot, if we need to, to a totally remote. We've been assured that by Superintendent Murphy. I think with the onset of the new rule of people traveling out of state, quarantining seven days instead of 14, that can help our cause a little bit. I don't know if this is the right answer, but I know that, right now, Tom Krodo's heart and mind thinks that that, we should stay in hybrid and try not to confuse parents and kids any further. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Krodo, and I know that Barb and, and I know that Ms. Higgins and Ms. Walsh would like to speak. I'm gonna speak, because I haven't said anything yet, but I will take some time at this point. And I'm gonna bring us back to the matrix. I don't want to get too deep into discussion of, you know, hybrid remotely, until we hear some from the public as well. But I appreciate everybody's, everybody's input and their consideration. I understand that the community's concerns with regards to the matrix and, and how they, they don't understand exactly, you know, how it's being applied. I think one of the weaknesses of our matrix, or one of the weaknesses in our communication of the matrix and, and, in back in September and all, is, you know, I'm right now looking at the Department, the Division of Public Health and Services, you know, considerations for transition, and, and we talk about the level of school impact, and we talk about community transmission, and we talk about the measurements of those. And when the superintendent and other folks are talking about, you know, making these decisions, you know, they're looking at that third diagram, that third decision matrix that most people don't see. It's the color-coded one, and many, many people have written me and said, "Jim, we'd like to go, we'd like that color-coded one to understand." And I think that's what other superintendents and other school districts are using. I think that's what our, some of our epidemiologists and Dr. Noble and all are considering, and that, and I'm not going to go into details, you can go in and look at it yourself, but when the level of school impact is low when the level of school impact is low, and even when the level of community transmission is substantial, you can fall into, you fall into the hybrid section of that decision matrix. And so that's where I think a lot of people are talking. I think that's where intentionally or not, we've been operating, and that's just my opinion, in my interpretation, but I'm not saying that's wrong. You know, our level of transmission is low inside the schools at this time. So I think, you know, if we want to include that and we want to utilize this, this entire document, I, I think that may be a better or an easier to understand point because people are always asking me, "Are we green? Are we yellow?" And so I would throw that out there just for some, some consideration. The other thing I want to say is there are people who have asked and have said, "Well, you know, what's really going on in the schools?" And I can't tell you about everything, but I was urged to make an impromptu and unannounced visit at a school, which I did. I went in around lunchtime at the high school, and I will just pass on. It was a brief visit, it was only a half hour or so. I didn't want to be the visitor that's impeding and being in the school that I wasn't supposed to be in. But I looked at the CRTC Construction Trades Classroom, and all of the kids inside that classroom were wearing masks, and they were social distancing. I went up to the entrance at the high school, and I didn't get a step inside that door till I had a thermometer on my head, and I was being asked seven questions. And I saw that with every, everyone who tried to get in there. You know, I, I saw the students and every single one of them, I have to, I wasn't expecting it, but every single one of them had their mask on, and they had it over their nose and over their mouth and chin, and they were wearing it correctly. I saw one of our special needs students and the aide that was with him, and, and while he was poking at his mask, but he had his mask on exactly, exactly right, and his aide was, was with him and checking on that. It was very reassuring. I, I looked in the window of, of the art classroom, and so if Concord Police got any calls, that was me. I apologize for that. But I wanted to look in. I looked in, they were sitting distant, and they all had their masks on. I looked in the new Commons A area, and there was a study hall or a study session or whatever going on, I'm not sure exactly which, but there were numerous students in there. They were sitting, as Ms. Walsh is sitting, at the end of the table or at this end of the table, and they had their masks on and were working. I was very much reassured, and I wasn't expecting to be. I was expect, because, because we do masks and distance and cleaning, because it's multiple layers, and when someone misses a layer, you know, there's that person who forgets and takes the mask off and stuff. We are still protected because of those multiple layers. But those students, I will say, were doing all of the things that I expected. You know, now when they, when they get out of school, and I saw them walking down the street, they take their masks off, but I don't think that's too unusual. But I do have to comment, and I do, I will say this right now, is that I am very much impressed with the commitment of our teachers and administrators in those schools, because those teachers were all over it to make sure those kids realized that the reason they're allowed to be there is because they are obeying the rules and following it. And the teachers are right on it. As I said, I wasn't too in an elementary school, and I'll put everybody on warning, I will be, but I just have to absolutely commend the, the teachers' efforts and their commitment and that of the administrators, because what I saw today was really amazing. So thank you for that time. And at this point, now I will go to Ms. Higgins and then Ms. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. I'm going to piggyback on a couple of things. So the word "safety" keeps coming up. We, as parents and teachers and administrators and board members, want to keep our students safe, and I find sometimes that we can channel ourselves into our, our definition of safe. And right now, safety is more than just a negative COVID test. Safety is enough food, safety is instruction, safety is eight hours in someplace that isn't your home if your home is a bad place, safety is mental health, safety is feeling connected. Safety is much more than this. And in my mind, we need to balance the safety, prevent our kids from getting COVID to the best of our ability, while not forgetting that in their day-to-day life, there are a lot more high-risk issues than COVID. And that's for families and their children. And I think when I listen to things that I hear from teachers around supporting the hybrid side, what always comes up is the mental health and the social health of, health of our students. And it, and it's in that vein that I, that I agree with Tom a bit and with, with portions of Kathleen's proposal, that we maintain a hybrid model, especially for our elementary school students, and that we, we do so with an open mind, that we could have to make decisions that change it. I understand that, like Chuck said, there's no decision that's going to be okay with everybody, but I, but I look at safety as much bigger than getting sick physically. And so that's kind of where I come from.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Ms. Walsh. Oh, sorry. Let me, yeah.
Thank you. And I, I wanted to follow up on my question earlier, and I agree with Ms. Higgins and Mr. Krodo, that, Mr. Parker, there are a lot of reasons I think we should keep schools open, including, I don't think, most of the, many kids will not be in a safer environment, they just won't be our responsibility, and I think that's wrong to abdicate that responsibility. I also think we have to recognize that families are on the edge, and many will teeter over if we do this. But I had asked about remote numbers, and I think I'm just going to ask it more directly. Given that families entered, made a choice based on one set of facts that have now been changed, can we open, will you open up the switch to remote for elementary school students for November 30th through the rest of the winter, so that families who are uncomfortable with not following the original matrix can now make that choice?
Question for me?
Wow, you're the superintendent.
I'm sorry, I thought you were asking. Can I delegate that? No. You know, we've tried to make every effort to accommodate our, our students and our families who ask for remote. We've done that. We've done that in a number of cases, but we got to a point back in early, I think, late, middle of October, I guess, is when it started. We were, we were, we were heavy in some of our remote classes edging towards 25, and we didn't know where we were going to be able to, to place those youngsters. In some cases at the middle and high school, it was no problem. It was at the elementary school where it's difficult for our teachers to have 10 kids in front of them, doing all their reading groups, math groups, I think I talked about that last, on Monday. The challenge is, is having those youngsters remote into those classrooms, because that's what they could do. They're home, they're remote, they just remote into their teachers', into their teachers' class. That's the challenge, and so I'm, I'm not ready to answer that question tonight. I know you want an answer, but...
Mrs. Murphy, I'm sorry, I...
But I'd like to at least spend some, a little bit more time with, with our teachers to make sure that, that they're ready for that, because that takes a little bit more of a, of a management and keeping kids on task. I mean, you think about kindergarten kids zooming in when you have 10 of them in front of you. That's, that's a difficult challenge. What we've been doing is we've been hiring extra people, we've been hiring proctors and monitors to help in some of those classrooms. So I need to identify where those classrooms are, where the numbers would be, and putting in some additional support with those teachers, because they, they can't do it by themselves.
And I don't know that having children, elementary school students remote into a class is...
No, it won't work at all. That's kind of the point.
I mean, Zoom school doesn't work for, very well for elementary schools for a lot of reasons, but, I mean, can we not move towards permanent subs for classes where we have overflow?
What, what that means is, is that now when a youngster chooses to go remote, they leave their teacher that they've been with, and that was, that was somewhat of a concern to parents. They, people who initially said to us, "I'd like to remote, have my child in the remote model," changed their mind because they realized that when they did that, they would lose that teacher that they started the year out, so they stayed. So it, I wish it was an easy answer, that's why, I'm not trying to avoid your question.
And I appreciate and recognize there's not an easy answer, but it feels like we have to give families an answer, and if you're planning to give them an answer in January...
Right. It's too late, and I hear you, so...
You changed the rules on them. They didn't change the rules.
No rules got changed. I don't know that any rules got changed, but the logistical piece, I'll just speak to it, I've worked in the district, I've been an educator, I know Sharon Riker spoke twice the other night, she's a second grade teacher, on how difficult it is when a handful, like a new student comes into the remote. The, when the classes change, somebody leaves, somebody comes back. Hybrid teachers say the same thing, it's just, it's such a delicate balance right now. It's not, it's not as easy as saying, "All right, Mrs. Smith, you're now a remote teacher, so all of the hybrid students in that class are no longer hybrid, and there's a new group that will now be remote." You know, you get to that point where it's a cog in a wheel, which is unfortunate, but I think that's the reality of it. And I, and I agree, I feel like we should be able to be more flexible. I've come up with a couple of ideas that, like every other idea, are logistical nightmares, so that's just my input on it. I don't feel that, I don't feel, as an educator, it's, it's like, you know, balancing, you know, lit candles in your hands all day. How do you make it work without burning yourself?
Thank you. Ms. Cannon.
Comes complete with cleaning cloth.
And I think my comment goes back again to the darn matrices, which tells me that the level of school impact is either moderate, strained, or critical. And I know I've had a disagreement with the administration, what constitutes critical. I was told, "Well, we don't have to close the schools yet." I don't consider that critical, I consider that failed. If we don't have enough teachers and we have to close the school, that's not critical, that's failed. So where we are now, that we cannot accommodate those requests from parents who are afraid to send their kids to school, that tells me that the staffing issue, the impact on the school at this time is at minimum strained, if not critical, going back to the matrices.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
Yeah, I mean, this matrices thing that we, we keep talking about is a little bit confusing to me, because we look out there in the public and we, excuse me, acknowledge that there are a lot of COVID cases, and so we're concerned about that, and our matrix, before it was set up, when it was set up before school was even here, we made a direct link between the number of cases in the community would be equivalent to the number of cases in schools, when in reality...
No, that wasn't how they were set up, Dave.
Well, this is how I think people are interpreting it, because it's not that way. We can't say because matrices, you know, we use them and they're, now we no longer use them. In other words, we can't say, "Well, there's a lot of cases in the community, so that's a problem, but there are not a lot of cases in the schools, but that's still not the problem." I mean, in other words, we've proven that the matrices in some ways are not accurate with regard to schools, because we haven't seen a marked increase in transmissions in schools. So the assumption that that matrix is still accurate is false, in my mind.
I disagree. If you look at how the charts are set up...
Ms. Cannon, let's just, we'll wait for a mic so that everybody can hear.
Yeah, I, I disagree. If you look at how the charts are set up, one has to do with community factors, and one has to do with school factors. And the fact that we have very, very low transmission within the school, which I do give the administration and the teachers and students and everybody credit for that, because it could be, it could be way worse. It could be as bad as nursing homes, but it's not. But that's only one of the three factors to look at, at school impact. So you've got to look at the chart about community impact and the chart at school impact, and then you take the data from both of those and plug them into the matrix. That's how it was designed to be put together. And the fact that we have a very low transmission rate in the school, which is, again, fabulous news, don't get me wrong, I'm, I don't want it to be high, that's only one of three variables that you look at to figure out what your impact in the school is. My statement was that if we don't have the staffing to allow parents' choice, then we are either at strained capacity or critical capacity as far as staffing and flexibility within the school. That's one of the variables on the school impact chart, only one. But unfortunately, the way those are set up, you take the most critical of the community impacts, and you cross-reference it with the most critical of the school impacts. That's how the, I didn't make the matrix, that's how the matrix was set up.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
David, give it a mic.
That was really graceful, sorry. So, again, a couple of things that I kind of just keep coming back to. This isn't something permanent, it's something that we're taking temporarily because of travel. And I understand that travel doesn't always, doesn't equal transmission, one-to-one, but it does add so many little walking wild cards that we really haven't had before. I realize that Ms. Murphy had mentioned to me before, "Well, how do you know that that hasn't happened now?" And you don't know, but we haven't had a lengthy vacation yet where, I mean, I don't know about you, but I'm not going to drive to Virginia on a Saturday and come back on a Sunday. People don't travel like that for a weekend. This is something where some families are choosing to visit other families that are long ways away, and we don't know what's coming back to us. And I wish we had a crystal ball and could see or hold up one of those scanners and see if you have COVID, but we can't. And I have another question, I don't know if it's maybe for Donna or maybe for Kathleen, but it's my understanding that if we did go to remote, that we would be losing about 12 hybrid days, but students would be getting 24, whatever the number is, double it, 24 live, in-person, full days with their teacher. Because I, I mean, my family personally, I know I've said it before, but has sort of our feet in both worlds. We have one child who's remote, one child who's hybrid, just works for us. She's not getting a worse education because she's remote. I honestly think she's made huge gains this year because she's had her teacher every day, all day long, the same teacher. She's, has that contin, constant, consistency every single day, so her teacher knows the next day where she's left off and can continue on with that. So I still am in favor of moving to remote. I don't know if you can maybe further explain that notion that students would be not necessarily losing time with their teachers, but actually would be gaining more instructional time? And if that's true or not.
And then after, can we hear from teachers and administrators? There's a lot of people here that probably have a lot to add. We've been talking a lot.
We will, yeah, I was going to say, we will, I want to move this into where we get some public comment, and I see that after Ms., after Ms. Murphy, I know that Mr. Krush wanted to say something, and I believe, I don't know if Ms. Pally has the information that Ms. Walsh asked for, and so...
She does.
So I'd like to try to make this kind of brief and then go into public comment.
Yeah, I will be very brief, to answer your question, Danielle, and it's one that comes up a lot. The hybrid has two days a week, full days in person, right? And there's been a lot of concern that they don't have four days like they do in remote. But if you talk to the teachers and you talk to the administrators, they'll tell you that they accomplish so much more in those days, because you only have half your class. When you're a teacher and you have eight, eight to 10 youngsters in your class, 11 maybe, that, you can get a lot done, and that's what's happening. So it's a tough comparison, but I won't disagree with you that in remote, they have it four days a week and they have a, a full day. So your point is well-taken, but I don't want to discount those two... So it's a tough comparison, but I won't disagree with you that in remote, they have it four days a week, and they have a, a full day. So your point is well taken, but I don't want to discount those two days with the teachers in terms of the amount of work that they're able to accomplish, because they're smaller groups.
And I don't, sorry, I don't mean to jump in again, I don't discount those days, but like I said, I have my feet sort of in both worlds right now, and I can just speak personally that there's not a lot happening in my home on the second hybrid day, the in-person day is great, I, I don't know what else to say about that, but I can say that the remote seems to be working well.
Okay. Mr. Crush, and then we'll let Ms. Pally answer the question that was posed previously, and then I think we can go for public comment.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll be really brief, just, just two things, part of, one related to what Pam said. What happens now with the parent who is in a hybrid model, and I call up my school, and I say, look, the numbers are rising, I'm not sending my son or daughter to school, I'd like to go full remote due to my concern, and I understand the operational challenges, but I do think we are going to see quite a bit of that if we go into hybrid model and what's our strategy, and I'm not, I'm not looking for an answer. My second question is to pose is, have we, and I hope we have teachers and administrators present tonight, and I'd love to hear from them, how do the teachers feel about, about all this? I mean, really, it comes down to their strain and stress, and to the strain and stress on the administrators leading those teams. So that's, that's, I'm curious, you know, people do have the right to move, but I'm curious how we're going to handle that, and if, and if we can accommodate that, how we're going to handle that if we vote to go hybrid during this time period. Thank you. And by the way, I do have to just briefly say, the administration, Matt, his teams, the teachers, I would observe principals at an elementary level getting kids on the bus, she didn't know I was observing, it was unplanned, and those kids wore masks, Matt Cashman, his team have done a phenomenal job, the district and the principals have done a great job, in no way is this stating otherwise, but I think we unfortunately are in a different, or in a changing landscape, and that's what this is about to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crush. Ms. Pally.
Okay, so, just quickly, Ms. Walsh asked a question, so I polled the principals, and understand that the issue of switching is only an issue for K through six, seven through 12 can switch because there's, because those teachers are doing yeoman's duty and working both, they're literally working with kids in a room, and kids on the screen, and it's the same kids, they don't change teachers, it's something like that if they want to go remote. So the, that just leaves the sixth grade at Runlet, which does have a separate group, and there are no outstanding requests, the principal was able to provide anyone who asked for remote there. Of the five elementary schools, there are two schools that have one request pending, one of them, that student is going to start on remote on November 23rd, and the other, and two of the schools each have six students who are, have requested and have not been able to be accommodated, so it looks like there's 13 students in the district who have asked. Now, that's just the people who the principals are aware of, who have asked, so I, there may be others who are thinking about it or haven't asked yet, that's as of today.
Ms. Walsh, did that answer your question? Thank you. All right, I think we've had a really good discussion, and I think we brought out a lot of good points, but I think at this point it'd be good to hear from the public. So, Mr. Dunn, let's first of all, as you get ready to accept people in there, let me first take a look here of those in person, and see if anyone, are we prepared, oh, thank you, if you could do that, and wipe down that microphone, and we'll be ready for the first person in the auditorium who may want to ask. So is there someone here who would like to come and make a comment? Please, come down.
Please just change out the mic.
Good. We'll just change out the mics, you'll be all set.
We have to use the recording mic.
So thank you for your patience, I've thrown a little curveball to our technical staff here, but we're getting all set up right now.
Thank you. Good evening, all, thanks for having us have a chance to share our input on this. My name is Susan Lozey, and I'm here, I'm Concord resident, but I'm really here as the principal at Broken Ground School, and I'm really here on behalf of elementary students and their families, especially those at Broken Ground. While I realize it's been a really difficult time for folks across the world, and in Concord, this past time has also been very traumatic, and has impacted the students at BGS very, very much, and I think you're aware of that. Students' academic learning has taken a hit, so has their social emotional skills, and so has their just overall wellness, so being back at school has been really a positive thing. We did start the year in full remote, and I can tell you, with the new level of synchronous instruction that we were doing this year, it was, we got many positive accolades for how things were going, we really did. However, the proof is how the kids are doing, okay? And at least at Broken Ground, we had a large number of students who this did not work well for, who did not make the kind of learning gains we wanted to see. I don't think the program is the problem so much. I think what we need to think about is, what do we know about eight, nine, and 10-year-old kids? How do they learn? They respond to active, hands-on kind of learning experiences, and they weren't getting that. We really need to tap into their curiosities, their creativity, and their imagination, and that's not that easy on a screen, and I think our teachers did amazing work. If you had a chance to listen in, like I did, to classes, they were engaging and fun, but they were, not all of the kids were with you all of the time. So we know for sure that eight, nine, and 10-year-olds don't need to have more screen time, they don't need to be on video games, they don't need to be on screen time, that's my, I guess that's my bias, I'm going to bring it right up. They need to be out playing, and they need to be engaged and being active. So moving to hybrid has allowed those families who opted for that a different kind of environment for their kids. And I know that for some families, who, we have three classes of students that are in remote, and, you know, some of the parents are very happy with that, so I'm certainly not discounting that. But since the kids have moved back to hybrid, what have we begun to see? We've started to see an increase in stamina for writing. Now, when those kids were in remote, they were getting writing assignments, they were showing their teachers on the screen, they were sending things in, but it wasn't at the same level as what we're getting when they're here in front of us. We're also starting to see them start to get better in terms of their deeper comprehension for analyzing and inferring, and also how to apply those real, the math skills that they're learning into real-life situations. So when kids came back to us in October, we did reading assessments on all of the kids. This is depressing for me as a principal of a school to report, but it was close to 70, 70% of our kids that are reading below grade level. That is not acceptable, it's not what we want to be doing. So I'm here tonight, and I want to speak to you about why I wanted to speak, and it's because I'm talking about the single moms and dads that talked to me, who did their best by sort of doubling up and tripling up with family members and friends in their neighborhoods and apartments. And they did that so that they could go to work, whether it was working in retail, serving meals, or cleaning apartments and buildings. These, these children, they were really trying to work, but they were in pretty cramped quarters with lots of people around them, lots of activity going on, and they just really couldn't attend and stay with it. And the other piece that really happened, for sure, was that most of those kids didn't have a table or a desk to work on. So the kinds of things that they were trying to juggle as eight, nine, and 10-year-olds was really difficult. I'm also here on behalf of the parents who did try their very best to fill in the gaps, to engage their children, and many, many have been in contact with me about how it was such a battlefield at home every day of constant nagging, consequences, or giving up, and saying, I can't do it. And I'm also here in support of the childcare centers in our area that have really done an amazing job stepping up to take care of the kids whose families did need to go to work, and these centers tried really hard to have our kids on remote learning, but those centers are designed for younger kids who are needing to have lots of activity, so those places were busy, chaotic, energetic, I mean, all the things you'd want for your young children, but our kids that were trying to go to school, it was very distracting, and they weren't able to get their work done. So families were arriving at the end of the day to pick up their kids, and needed to now start doing some of the assignments with kids. We have 13 hybrid classes with students attending the two days a week, so we have a lot, and three that are remote. You folks spoke about, have we made changes? We were, we were being very responsive when any person called and wanted to change, we were making those changes. Then we got to a point where we would say to parents, listen, the end of the marking period is coming up this week, report cards go home Monday and Tuesday, it would be better if we could wait till the end of that period, before you're switching a teacher, and people were very fine with that. But overall, as a whole district, we need to look at, do we have enough staff? I totally understand where you're coming from, and it's something that you should be challenging us as administrators to figure out what we can do in terms of that, if parents are asking for those requests, because I will tell you, at Broken Ground, we really do believe, we want families to feel comfortable in what their, their students are, you know, where they're being taught, whether it be remote or in a hybrid class, we want them to be comfortable in that. We haven't had a lot of people contact us, the numbers have been climbing, and, you know, things have, people have been concerned about it, and I haven't gotten a lot of calls, I have gotten one today. So one of the things that I want to like really emphasize in hybrid classes, we do see that students are much more comfortable at that, at those ages, in asking questions, in seeking assistance than they did when they were on a screen with all their classmates. Those kids that are kind of shy and withdrawn, they're, they're not as apt to do that when the whole, everybody's on the screen. Now, teachers have gone above and beyond, and they have times when they meet individually with all of these students to try to make sure they're catching up on that, but. We also have teachers that are circulating, checking in, and they can see when there's a misunderstanding right then and there, they can fix it, so kids aren't practicing these things incorrectly. I want to just talk a little bit about, you know, the difference between the two kind of learning environments for some of our kids. Our fourth graders, most of them had the opportunity to do the owl pellets just before Halloween, we'd try to get the kids down, so we'd give them something really exciting to do, they love looking at those owl pellets. Most of them had a hands-on opportunity where they actually had the owl pellet, they had the equipment, and they were investigating and, you know, dissecting it and looking to see what's in there, they were acting as scientists, if you will, to do that. And then the kids that were in our remote class, they actually did do a video, and they saw people doing the same thing, and saw what the process was, that the scientists would go through, and all that was in those owl pellets. But I want to say, which students do you think are going to remember that learning activity the most? Which students do you think are now going to be much more engaged in the natural world in terms of what those things are, and have we captured their curiosity? From my way of thinking, that's what elementary education is, and so we want to emphasize that. I know you know that, I know you're worried about the safety for kids. But for, to, when it all boils down, here's where it comes to for me. Letting us stay in hybrid for as long as we can, it all boils down to equity for me. Equity for students from all socioeconomic backgrounds. Equities for students who come from various cultures. Equity for the students who need learning in multi-sensory ways. Our staff attendance has been outstanding, I'm talking outstanding, we very rarely, other than somebody having a death in the family, have had one person out in our building. People are working hard to stay safe themselves, and to stay, and for their kids, and for their colleagues as well. Even when you look at the data of the ones that were planning to go away at the Thanksgiving, which is, I know, really important, there is not a lot of people that, that work in the elementary buildings that are traveling at Thanksgiving. I believe there was one teacher across all the elementary schools, that's just significant to think about. We will consider to offer remote learning for those people who prefer it, but I don't want to shortchange, and I hope you'll really seriously consider, thinking about not pivoting right now at that Thanksgiving time, and helping us to get to that December time, unless those numbers and the transmission within the school changes, because it will then give those kids who have been back with us about four and a half, five weeks, a full eight weeks of being hybrid, of having those opportunities, that is how they learn. So I would hope, I know that it's really difficult, and you have a lot on your plate to think about, but I hope you can keep in mind that equity is just as important for us to consider, because we are doing a good job in terms of the safety. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. So we, thank you, I already see people taking care of, of our microphone. At this time, I'm going to remind everyone that we, per Policy 132, have a five-minute limit on your, your remarks, we want to be able to get everyone, give everyone the opportunity to speak, and so, and I also will ask everyone to please mute your microphones if you're remote until you're told, recognized, and told to unmute to be able to make your comment. So we have another person in here, can you please step up, give us your name, and identify yourself for, so that we can have you for the record?
My name is Ellen Kenny, and I also, I'm a teacher, I'm the English Language Learners teacher at Broken Ground. I knew I wanted to come here and speak, and before I even say anything...
I will, I don't want to interrupt, but be sure to hold the microphone close, because the...
You have a soft voice.
It's, it's sometimes difficult for the people remotely to hear, thank you.
Before I get started, and I hope to be brief, thank you so much for what you are doing, because this is a dilemma, and I knew I wanted to speak, and all day long, I thought, well, what, what am I going to say? I typed up something last night, I thought I would read it, my printer didn't work when I got home from the after-school program, so I've been sitting here all the time thinking, what am I going to talk about? And I'm glad Susan went first, because now I know, I'm going to talk about owl pellets. I, one of my students, first, just to back up, with the English Language Learners, I had them in a remote group between March and June, and then throughout summer school. Attendance was poor, and the only one that learned anything from the remote learning for this particular group of children, I feel like was me. I had one child that I knew well through my school experience with her, and I always thought of her as being less than motivated and pretty irresponsible. Once I see her on the other side of the remote screen, I realize this, this 10-year-old is absolutely gifted at multitasking, because she is stirring the family's dinner, she is taking care of a toddler with remarkable patience, and she's doing a load of laundry. And I can say with great certainty that when my children were 10, this was not a part of their skill set. So what I learned was, a kid who I thought was like lacking in motivation and responsibility, was really excelling in a whole set of life skills that I didn't know about, and while she's doing all this, she's saying, I'm listening, Mrs. Kenny, and you know, there was no learning for her that was actually able to take place. Okay, moving on to owl pellets, I had another student who simply was absent throughout this whole time. He would hide from me, I would actually see him when I was on with another... I would actually see him when I was on with another student and he would run through the house and, and just, you know, try to maintain a low profile and not let me get him. I talked to the parents, I went to the house, I did everything I could to get him on my screen and be able to educate him. It didn't happen. But thanks to the decision that all of you made back in September, I was able to get these children four days a week at school. And at the beginning, nobody was used to the routine and being back at school and after just a very short period of time, I felt like I was again in the position of being an educator and they were learning so much. They had slipped considerably, but once they were, once they were with me, either outside or in the building and with my staff, we were able to teach, they were open to learning and learning was happening again. So this particular child, this evasive child, we called him the gingerbread man because we can never find him, he was always running. After the owl pellet lesson, he has two days hybrid and then two days with me where we're working on catching up and remediating all of the missing skills. He brought me this little skull that he found in the owl pellet and he said, is it okay if I do a presentation to the group? And he stood there and he told us everything he learned about owls, he used content level vocabulary, and he was clearly enthralled with his learning. It was so exciting. And that's why I dread returning to full remote because I feel like some children simply cannot learn at home. And it's unfortunate, but that's a fact. And it's our job to educate, we have to figure out how to educate all of them. And I want to see the hybrid model continue. And thank you very much for people here that said it better than I can. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. We have someone else. Just wait.
Hello. Woo, that was a lot. My name is Tina Philibot. I'm here as a Concord resident, as a parent. I'm also here as a teacher. I don't teach in this district. I teach at a high school in a smaller community. First and foremost, I want to thank the teachers in this community. I know as a teacher, you're hustling. They're doing the best they can under the most challenging conditions and I just feel like the work you're doing is really, it's, it's, it's a big deal. And thank you, we see it, we value it. I also want to thank you all too for allowing your teachers the space that if they don't feel comfortable coming into these spaces, they don't feel safe, that you're giving them that option. I can say that as a teacher in another district, we were not given that option. And it's really hard to be a teacher right now with all the political rhetoric. So we appreciate, I appreciate that you've done that for your teachers. As a teacher, I'm wondering though with, you know, we're talking about the holiday piece, right? I just wonder, have we done the hard math though about if teachers are on vacation, they come back, they quarantine and everything, the folks who are still left in the buildings? Have we done the hard math? Have we considered the possibility for illness then? We had over 300 cases in New Hampshire today reported, right? And clearly things are going up. We hear things are going to get worse. So I'm just wondering, has that hard math been done based on the trajectory of the cases? I know that Governor Sununu is saying that we are equipped to do that, but again, our numbers are spiking. The other piece I'm wondering too is that, you know, we're talking about the schools being a safe space. Do we know that if we're not testing kids and teachers, right? At the colleges, they're, and I know they're like closer, closer conditions at the colleges, they're testing kids and teachers and faculty, everybody on that campus twice a week. Do we know that it's safe? The reality is, is that these cases started going up and we need to admit this, once schools happened. Within two weeks of kids getting back to school, we started to see the cases go up. Now that the doors are closing, it's getting worse. So I'm just wondering math, right? If though, it's possible that that's going to happen, right? That, let's just say, things do get worse and based on the trajectory that could be, plus you have teachers quarantining anyway for the holiday piece. I just would, I would urge you to give teachers a chance to plan, right? So as a teacher, this inconsistency moving from remote to hybrid to a little this, a little that, having kids, you know, on Zoom, being in class, it is so hard. It is so, so hard. I can say that as a parent, my daughter, when things were fully remote, she was fully, you can build community remotely with high school students. I can't speak to the iddies, right? But definitely with high school students, that can be done. And my understanding still is that they carry a heavier, I don't know, words, right? So a heavier, you know, they have more COVID. So that's something I'm thinking about a lot. So I also hear people saying that teachers are excited and happy to be back and I know that you are. I think that's amazing that your littles are doing the best they can and I think it's different for the little kids, right? But again, as a high school teacher, I don't know that I could stand up in front of my own school board and my community, in front of my administrators, in front of my superintendent and feel, I know I wouldn't feel comfortable saying the same speech in front of them. Are you sure that you're getting authentic information from all of your teachers? And what is the, you know, what is the feedback that you're getting? I can speak to the challenge of being a parent. I am a teacher. I think I'm a pretty good teacher and I can't teach my own child. So I get that piece. My daughter, when, you know, we want to speak to the mental health issue, when you have your hybrid days, right? And I'm seeing this a lot with my own students, is that on the hybrid days, they're not necessarily getting up and working, they're sleeping until 12. So that's inconsistent for kids. It's not good for their sleep schedules. And I can say again, for the high school kids, they were building community. She was getting more consistent, she was getting more consistent interaction with her teachers. And now that it has gone hybrid, she feels left behind. She feels like the kids who are in the building are getting the best education and she is feeling left behind. So let's go ahead and talk about equity. So as a person of color, I'm wondering, have you spoken to the people of color? I hear people talking about equity, I get it, right? But who are the people of color that you've spoken to? And how about the parents with kids who have, who struggle with mental health issues? Have you spoken directly to them? Because I can say that my kid, even just sleeping until 12 one day, getting up at seven the other day, all of those pieces or, or 10 o'clock or not, it's just inconsistent. When it was fully remote, she had a clear schedule, she was up every day at the same time doing that work and it was successful. So I'm not going to speak for everybody or for every grade level, right? But I can only speak for what my experience is as a high school educator and a parent of a high school student. I wonder though about the binary. What I hear are three options right now, fully remote, hybrid, or like vacation scheduling, right? I heard somebody say, what, was it Chuck maybe? Is that his name? Have we explored other options? What does it look like? Could we potentially have the high school go fully remote, right? Could that happen? I believe, I don't disagree that it's more challenging to work with little kids online, right? If the high school kids go fully remote, how could that shift the way that the cases are moving? Could we think about having online academies? The reality is, is that now that we've tried out this virtual learning piece, right? It's here to stay for a lot of us. It's not just going to be in the hands of V-Lax. I think contemporary high schools, even our face-to-face ones, when this is all over, we're still going to be doing some level of online learning because it has been successful for so many kids. So yeah, that's, that's, I guess my recommendation is for at least the high school to go fully remote, much like all of the colleges have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have someone else here that would like to speak at this time?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Rothenberg. I'm the director of the CRTC. This is my 27th year in Concord. And this year, more than any of the year, I am humbled, just humbled when I interact with teachers, students and parents alike. This window of time is exhausting, you know? It is incredible effort to be here from a teacher perspective. At CRTC right now, we have 100% of our teachers onsite, we have strong attendance and we have students who are finding purpose. And I comment many of the board members tonight, in particular Dave, we're talking about it, this is a vital piece of their life. And so I worry that we approach this next window of time without good data, without good perspective. We make a point right now of surveying our students randomly every week or so and we ask four questions about their perception of safety, their perception of social distancing around them, their perception of cleanliness. And those students, each survey has had five to 600 responses, so 80-plus percent of students are responding. And every response on a four-point scale has been averaged from 3.5 up to 3.9. They're here, they're feeling like they're part of something, they're feeling like their peers are respecting who they are, their teachers are respecting who they are. So they're speaking through that voice right there. The other piece is, we also do a survey about where they're thinking, you know, where, what does the CRTC mean to them? And overwhelmingly, these students, I'm just going to pull up the data here, are commenting that this is where they're going. This is a vital piece of who they are. And what I worry about is, you know, we're going to approach the next stretch of time, like the previous speaker said, we could have all hybrid, we could have some fraction of it being remote, we can do something innovative. And I just urge the board to continue with hybrid. I think that our school, and I respect Mr. Richards, I heard the story today, it was like the, you talked to Mr. Hubbard, and I think that this school right now is ready. We are, we have cultures in place right now about social distancing, fresh air, wearing masks. We respond quickly to concerns and I think our population wants to be here. I think the option to be remote, I think Concord High teachers have worked very hard to provide, provide remote access to their classrooms. Students have options. They're deciding how they want to proceed. And I worry that the board makes a general statement about the district and I think there's a lot of different things happening and sites are different. One of the challenges of the data that Assistant Superintendent Donna Pally shared is the number of teachers who might be out. We recognize that at Concord High School, that may be an issue. We might need to make a hard decision for a stretch of time. But I don't want to mix that up with what a day-to-day life looks like. And when we're fully staffed with all our students or the fraction of students we have on a day, we are working very hard to provide a very safe and effective environment that means a great deal to our students. So looking back, it is a humbling experience to be administrator right now. When I walk up to students, all day long, I talk to students and I say, how's it going? What's on your mind? And overwhelmingly, they are so proud and so happy to be here. And I just want you to consider that in everything you do. And marry that with the efforts we're done with safety and the data we have of very few incidents and the incidents started outside and no transmission in the school. A lot of positive things are occurring right now. And I just urge you to stick with hybrid. We will shut down, if we had to shut down, I think Superintendent Murphy has made that very, very clear. I think our principal, Riordan, has made that very, very clear. I think the staff and the students understand that. But by being in hybrid, it gives us the opportunity to serve so many students in so many positive ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Sorry.
Thank you. Do we have someone else here who would like to speak at this time?
I'm Ally Maltese and I want to thank you all and thank all the teachers, the principals, the administrators for all their hard work. I know I spoke the other night, but something was brought to my attention yesterday that I certainly want to bring to light. I'm a very strong advocate for mental health and special education and right now I have three students from Concord High School that spend half their days watching one of my boys. And two of them are hybrid and one is remote. And I often hear, because I'm very concerned, nobody's checking in on their mental health right now. They still have yet to hear back from guidance counselors and they're feeling pretty depressed. They're feeling pretty divided. They're feeling pretty isolated and they've asked me for, they know any psychiatrists and they don't know if their families can afford the copay. And I understand we're in hybrid right now, but I know we're hitting a mental health crisis, especially with these kids going through something we have not gone through in schools. Everything has changed for them, everything regarding prom or getting togethers, going to the movies, the mall, all of that has changed. You know, as a mom, I know I have two little boys and luckily my oldest one is doing so well with hybrid right now, but he did well with remote as well. But I just want you to consider, we need something with the mental health with these kids right now. These girls that are coming over to watch my youngest so I can actually get a little time to myself or any work done, they come and talk to me. When I was out canvassing for school board, you wouldn't believe how many kids came to the door just wanting to talk. They hardly knew me. And I said, hey, is a guidance counselor checking in? How's everything going? I haven't heard anything, I don't know. And that really scares me because the adolescent time is a big developmental stage and I just want to make sure that we are considering that tonight and if there is a plan for these kids, because I really do worry. We don't know how long this is going to last. I have my husband who works for the federal government as a nurse, who has seen many veterans with mental health crisis. And with the adolescents right now, because they don't have those same opportunities as we all did in high school, it's a big divide. Everything has changed and when, I certainly recommend, thinking back on it, the documentary on Netflix, I forgot the name of it, it's about social networking. There's so much internal damage that happens when you're on the phone all day, when you're on the computer all day, you see your friends maybe for a day or two and then go home and you're at it again. So I just really wanted to shine a light on that tonight, just so you're aware. I am a concerned parent and I'm concerned about these kids in our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Maltese. I think we have someone else in the audience that would like to speak. Go on down and-
Good evening. My name's Kim Blyer. I'm a Concord resident and I'm a teacher at Concord High School. And I want to applaud all of you for your careful consideration tonight and the work you're doing. I don't envy the choice you have to make in the slightest. But there is one thing that I can't sit back there anymore and hear and not stand up and tell you about. And that is the idea that, that more curriculum is being delivered because we have smaller groups. That is simply not true. So I teach at the high school and I work with a great group of educators and we plan together and deliver our lessons together. Sometimes we combine classes and team teach. And we're constantly changing it up. So to compare this year's date to last year's date is not 100% accurate, but I can tell you that the lesson that we delivered today, last year we delivered on October 22nd. And that class, I did the ma, I looked at the calendar while I had them in front of me, I will see them six more times before it's time to do competency reassessment at the end of the semester and then the course is over. So I'm already that far behind and now I will see them six more times. So I don't, I don't know, I mean, there's so much to consider when it comes to remote, hybrid, I get that and it's so complex. But you have to understand that it is not the same amount of curriculum delivery at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to come down and speak at this time? If you don't, we, you know, we'll go to the phones, but you'll still be able to come down and speak. Mr. McCray, come on down. So I teach at the high school, and I work with a great group of educators, and we plan together and deliver our lessons together. Sometimes we combine classes and team teach. And we're constantly changing it up. So to compare this year's date to last year's date is not 100% accurate, but I can tell you that the lesson that we delivered today, last year we delivered on October 22nd. And that class, I looked at the calendar while I had them in front of me, I will see them six more times before it's time to do competency reassessment at the end of the semester, and then the course is over. So I'm already that far behind, and now I will see them six more times. So I don't know, I mean, there's so much to consider when it comes to remote, hybrid, I get that, and it's so complex. But you have to understand that it is not the same amount of curriculum delivery at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Is there anyone else here who would like to come down and speak at this time? If you don't, you know, we'll go to the phones, but you'll still be able to come down and speak. Mr. McCray, come on down.
Good evening again. My name is Michael McCray, a teacher at Broken Ground School. I'm the CEA president and resident of Concord. One thing I just wanted to point out, I noticed tonight, and with the numbers, we're, I think, we're 325 today of new cases. It seems that as the cases go up in the state, the state itself seems to be reducing their protocols and making things easier for this thing to spread. And I think the board needs to consider independent thinking and not following state protocols throughout this process. I think it's really important that we have an independent mind on what's safe for our kids and our faculty and our families. The other thing I wanted to bring up, David's point, you brought up the fact that we have a lot of needy kids in this district that have a lot of issues, home issues that aren't so great. We have them for 12 hours each week, out of the 168 hours they spend with their families each week. This is a bigger issue than just what we're doing right now, and I think it's something the board needs to address down the line in how we get help to these families. But that's all I wanted to say. And I thank you for everything you guys are doing. You have a tough decision to make tonight. Like I said before, the teachers will be with you. Our paraprofessionals have been doing a wonderful job, our custodians, everyone in the district is working real hard, so we appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. Do you have anyone else in the auditorium that would like to speak at this time? Sir, if you'll come down and state your name.
Good evening, school board members. Appreciate all the work that you do. My name is Jim Kennedy. I have two daughters in the school district here, one in middle school and one in the high school. My experience this year has been twofold. As you know, we were completely remote in the fall, starting out. At that point, the students had four days of class all day, and I thought that it was fairly effective. I was somewhat skeptical at first, but I found that the four days of instruction for my students was effective. I was a little concerned, quite frankly, that they weren't going Wednesday. Wednesday was purportedly some type of a makeup day, but nevertheless, they were getting four days of solid, consistent instruction. Then we opted for the hybrid model, and that has been an interesting turn. Now, my students have a Monday and a Thursday, a very inconsistent construction. Nothing against the teachers, I think that they're doing the best that they can do under the circumstances. However, particularly for a middle school student, to go in on a Monday, be on their own Tuesday and Wednesday, and then return Thursday, and then on their own Friday, is a recipe for disaster. And it is certainly a lot of work for the parents to be after these children. Now, I'm concerned as anybody about coronavirus. I mean, certainly, it is a problem, and it's something that has taken this globe, this our planet, our country, our state, you know, by the reins. It's definitely something that we have to absolutely be concerned about. But the hybrid, at least for us and for the folks that I've spoken to, and the middle school particularly, is not effective. What you need in education is consistency. Children need consistency in learning. You can't learn an algebraic concept on Monday and then pick it up again on Thursday. You need practice. I'm a former educator. I know David Parker's an educator. He works with kids, and the consistency is there. A routine must be established. A Monday and Thursday routine, particularly for middle school students, does not work. That is why I'm opposed to the hybrid model. And let me tell you, I was wholeheartedly in favor of it from the get-go, because I thought, okay, they'll be in class two days a week, and then, three days a week, I thought they would be zooming in to those live classrooms. But that is not the case. They are in class Monday, on their own, completely, I think there's a 20-minute or half-hour experience they have on a Tuesday morning, and then they're completely on their own. So the live instruction is limited to two days a week. That is not effective teaching. That's not education, okay? We need to be focused on what's best for the students to be learning. And I know that there's certainly some for that own, at-home, remote learning does not work, right? Well, we need to figure out alternatives for them. So if we're going to do some type of hybrid, remote mix, we've got to offer the remote more than just the two days a week. If they're going to be at-home learning, set them up to succeed at-home learning. Create the consistency at home that is effective. Don't say, "Okay, kid, here's a book, good luck." Okay? Two days a week doesn't work for me. And I don't think it works for our district, and I don't think it works for the students. I really hope we think about that effectively. Corona, absolutely. We've got to be mindful, we've got our masks on, we've got to do all that we can do to make certain, sure, and absolute that we keep our families safe, our children safe, our teachers safe, but we cannot forget the importance of education. I'll tell you, my older daughter is in the CRTC, and she says to me, one of her best classes is one of her CRTC classes, because she meets every day. She's in school with them, but also she has the opportunity to meet with them remote every day. That is what we need. We need the consistency. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at this time? I'll scan again after we have our remote callers. Mr. Dunn, will you please set us up for some remote comments from the public?
Bring it over. Yep. It was giving feedback. The mic was bad. Sorry. Just trying to get it set up here. All right. So you can see my screen, right? You can see to the right, I'm scrolling down, and I don't see any hands raised, which raises a concern to me, because I find it hard to believe that somebody doesn't want to comment.
Well, in that case, let me announce it again. This is the time for anyone who is remote to either raise their hand or to call in. Please mute your microphone until Mr. Dunn recognizes you, so we can have one person speaking at a time. Jack, can you...
So let me just comment this. I just wonder if it's buggy, because I do see this 11 participants with the red, which tells me there's something, but I'm not, unfortunately, I don't see the hands, so I don't know what the problem is. And as you know...
There are hands.
Well, I'm aware of that.
Anybody here at that meeting?
I can't have everybody speak, because I've no idea who they are. That's the problem. So just give me a second, see if I can look at it some other way.
Mr. Dunn?
Yeah.
Michael McCray, can see the hands. Oh.
Right, okay. I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to coordinate. Let's just give it a minute. Let me just...
All right, Mr. Dunn, I certainly take a minute to set up, and if you would like to have...
Just, and by the way, I am going to be moving the board to Zoom and getting off this platform.
Okay.
I just want to do it when we have a meeting, just strictly to test this. I don't want to do it in the middle of this, because I don't want issues. So I just don't know why that is.
Jack, do you need a, do you need a, do you need a, like, three-minute break for you to set up?
Yeah, give me a couple minutes, because my problem is if I call on them...
Certainly. So in that case, as the chair, I'm going to declare a three-minute recess for everyone. Thank you. We will be back in three minutes at 7:38.
Josh, am I? All right, it sounds like I'm back on again. Mr. Dunn, or reset?
Did you ask Chuck to hit the?
Okay, Mr. Crush, would you do us a favor, please, and put your hand up and then put it down? So.
He is.
Thank you. Chuck, would you please put your hand up when you get a chance?
He might not be able to hear.
He will in a second. Mr. Crush, will you put your hand up for a minute for me to test?
The actual hand or the computer hand?
His computer hand. Chuck, can you hear me? Hey Chuck, can you hear me?
Yeah, my husband's saying no video now.
We can't hear you through Teams.
Thank you. Mr. Crush, could you put your hand up for me, please? Your virtual hand.
I don't think he can hear us.
I don't think he's hearing me, Jack. Josh, I don't think we have Mr. I don't think we have Chuck on. Okay. Chuck, can you hear us? I'm not seeing him. Jack, where do we stand as far as seeing people's hands? Can you see him?
I can see their hands. I'm on a Mac.
Okay, why don't you?
I can't hear. But if we can't hear them, I can call on them, but.
Call on a person and let's see if we can hear, because I'd like to start.
If the meeting has restarted, no one can hear you.
How about now? Hold on, they should hear us now.
Jack?
Okay, all right, I'll call on somebody.
Sarah Robinson, if you can hear this, please unmute yourself. State your first name, last name, where you're from.
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, I'm Sarah Robinson. I live at 45 Pennacook Street. I have two daughters in the Concord School District. They both go to school at Krista McCollitt. I want to thank Tina Philabot and Ellie Maltese both for speaking tonight. And I'd really like to build off of what Tina mentioned about equity and the issue of. And I think for us to participate in a bit of creative exercise in exploring exactly what it is that.
Well, clearly we had a little technical issue there. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us for a few minutes while we solve our technical issues.
Are we creating coalitions with individuals, organizations that can provide space for more neighborhood schooling situations that are closer to kiddos' homes in small cohorts? We really, the pandemic portal is giving us an opportunity to rethink the ways that we engage with our community. And I'd really like us to consider that when we are considering whether we go remote or go hybrid. We really do have a whole host of options in front of us. It just requires us to use our imaginations. So when we are thinking of equity, please remember who is not at the table and who has not spoken tonight and who won't have the ability to speak this evening. Are we engaging with those folks outside of these meetings? And if we are, I applaud the district. I know that everybody's working very hard to meet the needs of all of our students. But this is a community-wide issue. And all aspects of the community need to be consulted when we're going into decisions like this. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you to everyone who speaks and chooses to participate in these civic exercises. It's truly important that we all participate, and that's what makes our school district great. Thank you.
Jack, do you want to let Sarah?
Sarah, we probably got the last, maybe two minutes of your comments. Can you hear? Still hear me?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you.
All right. We hear any call about the last two minutes?
Okay.
So if you want to go ahead and state your comment again. Yep.
Well, thank you very much. I'll give you a summation then, so I'm not taking up more of our time, because I know that there's a significant number of people that want to speak as well. All I'm asking is that our district and our school board use their imaginations in rethinking ways that we can truly engage with our community and how we can provide access to our community. And that we are engaging with organizations that truly represent the demographics of people who really need us. When we talk about equity, we need to recognize who isn't being heard in these moments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay. Mr. Dunn, who's next?
Next up, Jonathan Weinberg. If you would unmute yourself, state your first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Weinberg. Thank you for providing this opportunity. Most, I feel like we're being reactionary instead of proactive. Just because there's not a full-fledged outbreak, I don't think we should wait for one to decide to go to remote. Additionally, I am curious about what percentage of the faculty and district staff support the hybrid versus remote model. Someone in the comments mentioned there's a small number of individuals who responded to this survey, but I don't think that gets a wide bird cross to actually reflect everyone else. And as well as the individual students, I know surveys were sent out to families a while ago, but what do the students feel like would be best for their learning interests if it just comes back to this idea? And overall, I just think there is a lot of extrapolating about what the possible, what people actually feel, instead of going back and to reiterate what Sarah Robinson said, who is being invited to the table, who has a voice, who is not being included in these conversations. And I think these are very important to consider when moving forward to ensure that an outbreak doesn't come before the district makes a choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Jessica Jordan.
Hey, Jim, it's Chuck. I can barely hear you all. I can, I can hear the people, the individuals that are calling in remote, but I can barely hear you and Jack and everyone else.
Thank you, Chuck. So Josh, they're not hearing us in this, on the microphones. They're not hearing us at a volume that, that they can hear. Can we give ourselves a little more volume here? Okay, thank you.
That is a little much. That's better, Jim. Maybe you're speaking more directly to the mic. I don't know. Or maybe he increased the volume.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Josh, for making that change. I can hear it. Mr. Dunn, the next person.
Yes, Jessica Jordan, please unmute yourself, state your first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comments.
Yes, my name is Jessica Jordan. I am the CEAA president. I am also a paraprofessional at the high school. I'm also a Concord taxpayer. I just wanted to bring to light tonight, because we've spent a lot of time talking about the teachers and how hybrid versus remote affects them. But I want everyone to take just a minute to recognize the paraprofessionals in this district and the program assistants who have worked tirelessly, doing the hardest job in this district with our most challenging students. So I just, I know that Mr. Richards and I spoke tonight, this afternoon. So I just want to make sure that everybody else on the board understands that the paraprofessionals have been working since September, doing their absolute best. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. I appreciate your comments. And yes, we do want to recognize them as well. Their work, their efforts are very much appreciated. Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Okay, Madison Howard, please unmute yourself, state first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment.
Yep, hi, my name is Madison Howard. I am a senior at Concord High School. So first, I just want to extend my gratitude to all of my teachers, the administrators, the paraprofessionals, and all of the hourly staff at the school who are working so incredibly hard. And I really don't think that they get enough praise for all the hard work that they're doing. So next, if you wouldn't mind me asking, I do want to know how many members of the board have been in the high school?
Sure, I believe her request was to know how many of us have been in high school. And I don't believe it means back when we were in high school. I mean, within the last couple of weeks or the last four weeks or so. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I have.
My understanding is that we were.
Ms. Howard, I will recommend, I will make sure you recognize that we are prohibiting volunteers or other people from visitors from going into our schools right now. So I believe the school board has pretty much been honoring that request. I try, I have been in the high school, but I have been as unintrusive as possible. So, but please go on.
Okay, thank you for your honesty. So I just wanted to know if you were seeing what was going on in the schools. So while I am currently fully remote, I have been to the schools a few times, like for SAT day. I see the classrooms through Zoom, and of course, I talk to my friends and teachers. And what I have seen and heard is that contrary to what I've heard a lot of others say tonight, lots of people are not wearing masks either properly or at all. People are taking their masks off in class or aren't socially consistent. And so I believe that everyone is trying their best. It's very difficult right now. But given the current circumstances, I do feel that it's realistic to expect students and staff to follow every precaution. And I think we're seeing that in the schools, especially in high school. I'm scared. I'm scared for my own health, and I'm scared for the health of my friends and family. While I am remote, and while I try to avoid going out as much as possible, I am still out in unity ultimately, as are everyone else who is currently remote. So I am still at risk. My friends and family are still at risk. To echo a few others, Jonathan said, we need to get on this, this issue before there is an even larger outbreak. Right now in Merrimack County, I believe we have one case for every 93 people. That means that in all likelihood, the high school has upwards of 15 cases. So as for learning itself, to echo what I've heard many others say, the lack of consistency with the hybrid model is indescribably difficult. I meet my teachers only twice a week, every other week. And in many of these classes, because I know I am not actually able to talk to my teachers or my friends. While remote admittedly wasn't perfect, I was able to talk to my teachers and friends and that would challenge us so much better. So I think also met most of the issues that have been expressed with the full remote model are generally limited to younger students. So I am asking for you all to vote, to have Concord High School go remote immediately. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Howard. Mr. Dunn?
Nathan Schmitz, if you would, please unmute yourself, state first name, last name, and go ahead and make your comment. Nathan Schmitz, please go ahead.
Mr. Smith, I think you're still muted. Mr. Smith, can you call in and we can then get your comment at that point?
I'm going to mute them. Oh, I think I can.
Okay, we will, Jack, keep an eye out for Mr. Smith's call. And can we move to the next person? Thank you.
He said his microphone is not working.
Thank you. We'll wait for Mr. Smith to come in. I'll ask everybody else to mute their microphones. And Mr. Dunn, the next person, and then we will add Mr. Smith when he calls.
Sure. McHugh family?
Hi, this is Rebecca McHugh. Am I, is it working? Can you all hear?
Yep.
Okay. I am the parent of two kids, one at Runlet, one at the high school. I was a pretty vocal critic against hybrid this summer, knowing sort of from the inside, working in a different school district, what hybrid would actually look like. And sure enough, we went from four days of instruction, where my children had predictability and consistency and were learning four days a week, to two days a week. And let me just describe for you how this is going for my 12-year-old. So my 12-year-old, who has significant anxiety and is 12, okay, she's a seventh grader, she's 12. Runlet has decided, not only during a pandemic, to do a two-day-a-week hybrid schedule, but also a waterfall schedule. So two days a week, my 12-year-old comes and stands in the doorway while I'm teaching my students, crying and holding things up and asking me if I can help her while she's at home teaching herself. And I have to brush her off because I need to do my job to stay employed, where I'm teaching online five days a week. And so Clara goes back into the little space in the bedroom with the desk and tries to teach herself for eight hours a day, two days a week. That is what hybrid looks like. So for those of you, Superintendent Murphy and on the board, who are speaking in your kind of isolated worlds as not being teachers and not seeing this day-to-day, let me tell you, if you're concerned about social emotional well-being, how two days a week of learning looks when you're asking a 12-year-old to teach herself and navigate finding things in seven different ways in Google Classroom? Like, I now have my kid in therapy, which I'm sure she's thrilled, I'm announcing on a school board meeting, once a week, because of the level of stress that this chaos that Concord has implemented is causing. It is unacceptable. It is appalling. And frankly, parents were utterly deceived by this district and this board. Those of you who tried to sell hybrid either were ignorant or purposefully deceiving us by saying, it would be great, kids would have in-person. Not one of you said, this will only be two days a week and your kids will teach themselves the other two days. Now, my high schooler, on the other hand, has teachers who are, who are making work much more streamlined and manageable. And it's, it's not like it's ideal, but hybrid isn't as big a debacle for her. She's managing herself, teaching herself, because she's 15 and a half. She's not 12. So I don't know, maybe I should take a video of my 12-year-old tomorrow and upload it onto like the Concord School District website or something and say, here's what hybrid looks like. So for everyone who believes this is going well, let's just be honest, two days a week of learning is not reasonable. And I agree that kids sitting in front of a computer is not ideal either, but it's a freaking pandemic. It's happening around the world. It's not just Concord. And my last point, I guess, would be this. While we're busy talking about, we need schools to be open, to be daycare providers, and we need them to be open for kids whose homes are tragic. Well, I teach in Manchester. I teach a pretty tragic population in my specific school. And I will tell you this, kids who are in most need tend to be ones who are choosing to stay home because they have younger siblings they are helping, and they, and a variety of reasons. And they are benefiting from me being available online five days a week to connect with them. Not log in one day and then disappear for three days. So I guess I'll stop my rant, but consistency and, and like, let's think about the mental health effects of children teaching themselves and having no human connection for days at a time. And that's what Concord Hybrid is creating.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. McHugh. Mr. Dunn, the next person?
Yeah, I'm going to move down to the phone numbers and try to find, was it Nathan Schmitz? If that's all right, if I can get the chat, the chat to stop going and covering the number a second. Hold on. Let me, I'm going to try the last two numbers that came in, if I could, all right? So phone number 07, ending 0723, area code 603. If you could hit star six and unmute yourself, if you are Nathan Schmitz, please.
Can people hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Nathan Schmitz. I'm also a senior at Concord High. And so I'm also, I'm very concerned that we are still considering the option of staying hybrid during the holidays, given the fact that the number of COVID-19 cases, both on a state and nationwide level, have been increasing exponentially since early October and continue to do so at an alarming, increasingly alarming rate. On November 10th, when the instructional committee was taking place, there was 222 new COVID-19 cases reported by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services on that day. The day after that meeting, on November 11th, both the New Hampshire DHHS and John Hopkins University reported 233 new COVID-19 cases in New Hampshire, which was an increase of 11 cases from that previous day. As of November 12th today, the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services has reported 323 new COVID-19 cases in New Hampshire, which is an increase of more than, of 90 more cases than on November 11th, and is now our highest number of daily cases from the original top number that we had, which was 247 cases in one day. These daily trends show that COVID-19 cases in New Hampshire are not decreasing and instead going up as time goes on. During the holidays, these numbers will only increase due to the fact that numerous students, teachers, and staff are expected to travel out of state during the holidays, as was reported from the recent survey. Now, not only will people be traveling. Now, not only will people be traveling from New Hampshire out of state, but in addition, people from other states will come and visit their families for the holidays, which will increase the chances of more people getting infected. This is concerning because those people visiting New Hampshire are not required to quarantine for 14 days. It is only a suggestion and recommendation that they do so by Governor Sununu and the state government. All of this shows that COVID-19 is not going away anytime soon, and that is very prevalent in New Hampshire and the United States at large. Based on these data points from top medical experts, I strongly recommend that we transition to remote learning, starting from Thanksgiving week through Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Now, the question I have for all of you is, if you continue with staying hybrid through the holidays, are you prepared to take responsibility for the risks and dangers that students, teachers, and staff will face? Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Mr. Dunn?
Okay. Let me just mute that again. Oops. Oh, he locked off. Okay. I'm going to go back up to the hands. Okay. Next one, initials BSR, if you would unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Beth Richards, and I'm from Concord. I just want to ask for clarity on going remote, that if, when remote happens, whether it is through the vacation time or due to the increases of cases, whether it would be back to the same remote where CRTC and the English language learners can come in and 504s and IEPs. I believe that was stated at the instructional committee. And I would like the board to consider potentially looking at the possibility and the administration of extending that to those students that are in the free and reduced lunch program, to be able to assist families that may need more, the way our meals are distributed and things like that, as we're, could be facing a long period of time for remote whenever that happens, based on the spread of the virus. Also, I think this has been said, and I'll just reiterate it, as you, and some board members, I think, are considering this based on their previous comments, is that you look at potentially breaking apart incrementally the elementary school who has different needs than the high school. And to, in your discussion and your motions later in the meeting, to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richards.
Next one, labeled guest, if you could unmute yourself. State your first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment.
Is that me?
Yep.
If you're guest.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Bailey. I'm a junior at Concord High, and I'm actually in my third year of CRTC. And I have just a couple of things to say. I am really lucky to be in CRTC, but to be honest, that is the only place in the school that I feel safe. I love my CRTC class, but, and I love that everyone is working to try and clean the school and clean the chairs after people sit in them, but CRTC is the only place that I actually see that happening. And another thing, I have a little sister, and she goes to Runlet, and it's so hard to watch her struggle every single day. She doesn't want to get out of the car to go to school. Because of her schedule, it messes up her sleep schedule, and now she can't wake up in the mornings, but she can't fall asleep at night. Because she doesn't have a schedule, she is just losing so much, her anxieties. I, 11 years old, and that's so scary, like insane. Honest, even though I am enjoying the school and CRTC, I would rather see everything go remote than on going to school and see Avery, my little sister, keep on going to school. But I do hope that there is some way that I can stay in CRTC in person and go hot, like remote everywhere else. But the hybrid is not working for me, and it is not working for my sister, and it is not working for my sister's friends who are in Runlet, and it's not working for many of my friends. So I just hope that the school board considers a complete remote for school, but something maybe in-person for CRTC. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, Sharon Riker. If you would, please unmute yourself. State your first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Sharon Riker, and I am a parent and a teacher here in Concord. I teach third grade remotely currently from Krista McCullough School. I did speak on, at Tuesday's meeting, so I just wanted to take a quick second to say, this is back from earlier in this meeting, but I really wanted to acknowledge Mr. Crush for really asking and being curious about how the teachers are feeling and the staff. Because that, just through all of this, that's been really difficult, that just feels, sometimes it feels like we're not quite as heard as maybe we'd like to be. And to answer your question, many of us, and I am not going to speak for everyone, but many of us are really struggling, whether teaching remotely or hybrid. There's been a lot of ups and downs, and obviously, at every change and every fork in the road, change is hard, and you know, it brings things to a head. But just in general, it's been really hard to see so many of my colleagues that I've worked with for so long, that are just amazing educators and really have their act together, and just always are, you know, in control and planned and just doing things like making it look easy, crying. I mean, the tears I've seen in meetings and meeting after school online together, just to say, "Oh, my gosh, how are we going to get through this?" They're tired, we're burnt out, and kind of wondering how this is going to look through the whole school year. And I mean, I'm just trying to be as honest as possible. I know a lot of us are kind of afraid to speak up and be honest about this, and I know that some of it is unavoidable, and people working in all sorts of different jobs are feeling the same fatigue for different reasons. But since Mr. Crush asked, I thought I'd kind of open up and, and just say that we're not doing great either. So we appreciate all of the support from the community. We have a lot of wonderful parents that reach out and give us words of encouragement and are appreciative, and we love that, and thank you for it. Speaking to what many of the people who are commenting are talking about with the mental health of students and being concerned about the safety of students who are living in, you know, in traumatic households or, you know, situations that are less than ideal for their safety. No one is concerned more about student safety and well-being and mental health than teachers and staffs at our school. When we are in full-person learning, we, we think about this all the time as well, and it occurs all the time. Before COVID, this is something that has been an issue that is on our minds and keeps us up at night. I actually see so much teaching remotely that I don't think I would have been able to see in ways, if I was teaching hybrid or in-person still, I've been able to just have a better eye on kind of where the students are coming from and get a better picture of what is hard for them, and be able to reach out to families maybe earlier than I might have if I was teaching in-person. So, you know, while there are definitely negatives to teaching remotely, and obviously in-person contact is just the best for everybody all the way around, there are things about teaching remotely that, that lend themselves to being, I think, a better option in some ways than hybrid. Because the hybrid model is not actually really going to be the fix for this mental health crisis. Two days a week of sitting at your desk with a mask on is not going to fix what these kids are telling us they need help with. It actually, instead, I think, highlights that there are huge areas of need and concern where we actually need other agencies to step in. We need help and, and resources that we don't have. And while I know that being hybrid is ideal for the learning of many students, my youngest son included, and as Susan Lozy pointed out, yes, being hybrid for younger students, or being in-person, I should say, is ideal in a lot of ways. You know, my son, actually, he does learn better in-person on those two days, my youngest son does. My middle schooler, who really wanted to go hybrid, he's a social butterfly, thought being there would be the fix to how he was feeling a little bit down at home every day. It's actually been, I think, worse for him, and he is a little bit torn right now, because he likes seeing his friends, but he's learning less. It's a different animal, I think, at the, at the middle school. The teachers are working really hard, but they have a lot of other challenges and complexities to work with. And he's, he's talking about wanting to go back to remote because he thinks he's going to get a better education that way. And for both of my, my children, you know, their educational needs being met at home or remotely, I'm sorry, remotely or hybrid are important to me, but really, it's not the number one priority right now. It's their health and safety, and the health and safety of my colleagues and of the other students and the stat, and just, the education is obviously a top priority for, for teachers all of the time, but we have to put health and safety first in this time where we don't know how the virus is going to really affect us. And then the last thing that I just wanted to say was, there was some talk about how teaching in the hybrid model allows us to provide better or more instruction to students, and I would say that I do not agree with that on a few different levels. But as a remote teacher, I'm actually ahead of my third-grade hybrid teachers in our curriculum. And I'm finding, or trying to find ways to kind of slow myself down so that they can catch up, and they're trying to find ways to cut corners, because they only see their students two days a week. So it's actually, I don't think, an accurate representation to say that when we are hybrid, we're doing, having better instruction. It can be more targeted, and obviously, face-to-face is better for a lot of students, but we are definitely covering more material and curriculum remotely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Riker. Jack?
Sorry, I'm trying to mute the person first and lower their hand, otherwise they stay unmuted and you hear that background noise, so, sorry. Okay. Next one, Kimberly Damaris. If you would unmute yourself, state your first name, last name, and where you're from. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Damaris. I have two young girls in the elementary school. They're back-to-back grades, one in second, one in third. Listening to everybody tonight, I agree with the hybrid. The hybrid my kids were so excited for, because they really wanted to get back into school, really get back to that schedule, seeing people, seeing their teachers. But unfortunately, I agree that with the remote, the consistency was there. They knew their expectations, they knew what to do, they knew when they woke up, they knew when to be on. With, I find with the days now, when they're remote, we can, we have schedules printed out for us, but with my girls so close in the grades, it's kind of hard for them to stay on that schedule, especially if I'm kind of bouncing back and forth. But we make it work, and we've sacrificed a lot, a lot of other people have too. I guess I'm just stuck because for our family, we're both essential workers, and seeing the kids that have gone to programs, Boys and Girls Clubs, I don't feel they're getting that one-on-one attention that they need. There's so many kids, it's hard to give each kid in different grades what they need in these, you know, bigger Boys and Girls Clubs, though I bet they do their best. We're all trying to do our best. But we struggle with if our kids go back to fully remote. They might be going to school under different reasons, because we could be homeless, just it's not working out financially, unfortunately. But I just wanted to comment, thank you guys for everything you do. We have a great elementary school, and we fully support everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Damaris. Thank you for your comments. Jack, who do we have next?
Okay. Guest ABC, if you could unmute yourself, state your first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment. Again, guest ABC, if you could unmute yourself, state your first name, last name, where you're from. Go ahead and make your comment. All right, I'm going to move on. Okay, Laura Hardy, if you could.
Ms. Hardy, you're welcome to step up. Mr. Dunn will help you with a microphone.
Thank you guys so much. I've been at home all this time watching you guys and emailing you during the, and I finally decided that I just needed to drive down once my child went to sleep. All that I can say is thank you to everyone, from people at the schools to you guys, but beyond that, I'm just going to talk a little bit about my experience throughout this school year. I have a child at Millbrook School, he's in first grade, and I feel like we haven't, at least tonight, talked a lot about the younger kids. And I also have two kids that are in our pod at my house, who are also in first grade. Each one of them has a different first-grade teacher at Millbrook School. When it was fully remote, there, the kids definitely, even though they have their friends, the two of, the three kids at my house, they wanted to go to school for sure. But I'm here to talk about how I feel we really need to go to remote, based on what Danielle said earlier, and what many people have said throughout this, is because I'm at home, I'm not working, my job has not reopened, I'm able to sit and watch almost every single interaction that these three kids are having on the days that they're also, in the days that they're home. Also, I have substitute teach at Millbrook School and have seen firsthand what's happening at Millbrook. Again, I can only speak to my experience and not anyone else's. On the days that the kids, so that's two and a half out of five days that the kids are at home, two out of the three kids have zero contact with their teachers. Every single assignment that they have is not responded to by those teachers. So I have, they can't, these are kids that can't even read, so they're trying to understand instructions over the internet. I'm trying to jump from student to student, which I'm maintaining, and that's fine. But the kids that I see on the phone calls with them, on the Zoom calls, who are at East Side Learning Center, or that aren't, don't have someone directly helping them, they are checking out. Screens are freezing, which obviously remote won't help, but on the two and a half days, nothing. And I've contacted the principal, I have contacted the teachers, and they just, the teachers that are not responding, they just have too much on their plates. But to have two and a half days where the kids who are in Title I, they need help reading, are not hearing from their teachers at all, I think it's seriously impacting their education. And although I completely understand a lot of people's need for hybrid, overall, I feel like as a community, we value education, the quality of education that we can give in this community, and I do not think the kids are getting a valuable education this year in the hybrid model. The second thing I can say is that I, I've only substituted once, I want to make that clear, in one classroom, because I have to be home every day except Tuesdays and Fridays, so I can only substitute at Millbrook two days a week. What I can say is that when I substituted, the kids, what I noticed, the kids are wearing their masks, except when they're at their desks. They have kind of like up here, spaces around their desks that they can't leave. But little kids, they can't understand what I'm saying. I'm trying to read stories out loud. I asked them, "What does your teacher usually do?" And they said, "When she's talking, she takes her mask off," excuse me, "she takes her mask off." It's just, when I ask my kids, the three kids that I watch, they want to be in school, but they also acknowledge that they're not learning what they need to be learning, they're not getting, because they have to work alone a lot at their desks in school, they're just not getting the experience in hybrid that, it's not a normal... It's not a normal year of school when you're in school anyway. And I kind of feel like we're going to be here in a week going remote anyway, and that's just my personal opinion. And we're going to be doing this again. But like I said, thank you very much, and I will give someone else a chance to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And for driving down. Mr. Dunn, who do we have next?
Okay. Next, Lynda Nordgraf. If you would unmute yourself. Go ahead, state your first, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Nordgraf. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name's Lisa. I live in Concord. Both my kids went and graduated from Concord High School a couple of years ago. I work both at Concord High School, and I also work at Concord Middle School. I want to echo everyone's thanks to the boards and the administrators and all the teachers for the great job that they're doing. I want to also respond to a few people's questions about how teachers are really feeling. I understand that we want hybrid to be a success. I understand we want it to be the answer. The harsh realities of it are that it's just not quite the answer we're looking for. Doesn't mean we can't improve it. But the same goes for remote. As far as school, my biggest concern about it is the safety concerns. We all know what the testing rates are, you know, within the state. We know that the cases are going up and up. I am scared to go to school. My kids are scared to be in school. I have kids who want to, you know, ask if they can sit by the window or the door because it makes them feel a little bit safer. COVID fatigue has an interesting way of showing up at the schools. One of the ways it shows up is that the first few weeks, the kids were very willing to go through all the procedures, to wear all the masks and all of that. It is getting harder and harder to keep those kids in masks. You know, hybrid is, feels like a mix of fighting with technology because we're being asked to teach both in-person and online simultaneously, and a constant battle to try to keep our children safe. By about 1:00, you start to feel like, gosh, do I have the energy to, you know, fight the good fight with one more kid again about why it's important to wear our masks to protect ourselves and each other? It gets harder and harder as the week goes on every week. I want to speak for a moment to equality. I understand that because of our hybrid situation, there is no other solution than for teachers to be asked to teach in-person and remotely simultaneously. But I also want to point out that the kids who are remote in that equation are at a huge, a huge deficit. It is just impossible to teach both those kinds of curriculums at once. You've heard many people say how much work it is for teachers to teach remotely. Well, picture being in your hybrid classroom and finding out when your kids walk in the room that you will be having remote students that day. Those students are not served well. I believe that the schools know this, but I believe that we don't know how to deal with it. I do think it is a far more equitable situation on the whole when we have everyone remote. We've at least got, you know, a constant, you know, a steady constant in terms of the platform we're working on. And finally, I would just like to make a point that, as a district, I feel we are not doing what we need to do to really make remote education successful. And I know that's a dangerous thing to say. But, you know, we're still, we still have our priorities around traditional school values. For example, in the high school, we're grading on self-direction and collabora... I'm sorry, self-direction and collaboration. We're being encouraged to talk to kids about that. But what our kids desperately need to be successful is focus on things like how to use a PDF editor so you can do your worksheet, how to handle 100 emails a week. You know, you can't find the stuff from your teacher because you haven't learned how to deal with your emails. I think we need to somehow be aware of and discussing some of these larger issues. Finally, I would just like to thank all the teachers and staff administration for all the hard work. From school board, thank you for all you're doing. I really do urge you to consider the safety stuff. COVID fatigue is a real thing, and it really is impacting the safety. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Nordgraf, and I appreciate your comments. Jack?
Yeah, sorry, it's jumping around and I... One second. Okay. Next up, Karen Craver. If you could unmute yourself, state first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment.
Sure. My name is Karen Craver. I'm an epidemiologist and a mother of two boys in the school district. I was surprised to hear that Superintendent Murphy was recommending against moving to remote through the holiday season, especially as cases continue to increase. The reason cited for this recommendation in the article today was the fact that we can't keep flip-flopping. But we're in this position now because we changed course a month in at her recommendation and based on the vote of the board. I'm so thankful that we were offered the option to remain remote, and I can't speak highly enough of my children's teachers, Larissa Brown and Joshua Gidejewski. They've done a fantastic job engaging the kids, and it seems like remote learning gets better each day. I recognize that remote learning doesn't work for all families, but I would encourage the school board to consider a solution that promotes remote learning for as many students as possible, leaving room for full-time, in-person learning for students who are not able to learn remotely. Reducing the number of students and staff in the school through the holiday season will help to reduce transmission in the community. And offering a full-time option for a small number of kids will help the district to meet the needs of the most vulnerable kids and families who need support. From what we're hearing tonight, the hybrid model is not working. Over 300 new cases of COVID-19 were announced today. And the governor, guided by trend data from the Department of Health and Human Services, forecasted that we'll see 1,000 or more cases per day in the near future. I think back to my children's time in preschool at Woodside and how much I appreciated the fact that a whole lesson was devoted to being a good community member. I question what message we're sending to our kids now, putting them in a position that not only puts them, their teachers, and their families at risk, but also puts the community at risk. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and insights. Jack, who do we have?
Next up, Angela Nelson. Go ahead and unmute yourself, state first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment.
Hi. Hi, my name is Angela Nelson. I called in on Tuesday. I'm sure you remember. I'm the one that has five kids in three different schools in the district. And, you know, I think the tough part about this, and I think we've heard many people talk about this tonight, is that there's clearly no easy solution to this. I would 100% agree that the hybrid is not working for most people, including my own children. But I think what really concerns me about this is that we've made it very clear tonight that full-time remote does not work for a lot of people. And so I think, you know, one of the things I really wanted to bring up too is the email that was put out by the superintendent maybe a month or so ago that was making the comment about how well we were doing with hybrid, how well we are keeping the cases down and all this stuff. And then she brought up a point about she's been being asked by people about when these kids will be, will even discuss going back full-time. And I know this is not a popular thing to talk about right now, but I think what concerns me is for someone who works in medicine is that to make the comment that until the virus is, you know, barely around, until it is, there is hardly any threat from this virus or until we have a vaccine, that we won't even discuss this. And as a parent, that's just, it's just so frightening to me because I look at it as my kids are never going to go back to school again. And as a kid, I have one who's going to graduate next year. And then I have one in kindergarten who is, you know, I can't even begin to think about her going fully remote. I think there are so many people in this community that going fully remote is not going to work at all simply because both parents are working. And to try to expect five children to sit in my house and be online the entire day, as I understand it from a safety perspective, from an educational perspective, it's a nightmare. I mean, I can't even, I just don't even know how to, like, say this tonight. But I think that the disease, this virus, is not going away. And until we get herd immunity, which we're not going to get it just shutting everything down, like, we're going to, we're either going to get it now or we're going to open it when the schools open back up, which is what someone brought up tonight. The numbers started going up when the kids started going back to school. And so I have a hard time with that, that until the virus is, you know, not even around or until we have a vaccine. And I'll also be curious, when a vaccine does come out, I would be very curious as to how many people would actually take this vaccine and whether or not it will be even something that's asked of us to bring our children back to school. But I think that, you know, I just think, I think you can't make the statement either that the most vulnerable kids can go to school five days a week because I think there's a lot of us in the community that would feel like our children qualify for that or should qualify for that, and they clearly don't based on the standards of what's happening right now. And so I just, I'm completely overwhelmed as a parent thinking about, is my, are my children ever going to go back to school? And I think for all these parents that want fully remote and they want that option and they have the ability to stay home with their kids, I think it's wonderful. But is there ever going to be an option for kids to go back four or five days a week if parents feel they want to take that risk? And as someone spoke earlier tonight, I loved, we all take inherent risk with our kids. We let our kids play sports. We let our kids go swimming. I mean, there's a lot of things that we do as a parent that we take the inherent risk on, and I don't think school should be any different. And so I just would love to know some of the feedback about that statement that was put out about, you know, until the virus is nonexistent or until there's a vaccine. That's a daunting statement to me as a parent with five children from kindergarten to high school. So that's just all I wanted to say tonight. And I just think there's no easy answer to this. I think we've made it very clear, hybrid's not working and remote doesn't work. So when is someone going to step up and say, when do we think about putting these kids back in to school if we feel comfortable as a parent doing that? I think it needs to be talked about. I'm sorry, I'm sure it's the most unpopular statement right now. But as someone who has not missed a day of work through this and protected myself, I'm just really struggling that we're never going to talk about this for our children because these, this is the future. These are our future doctors, these are our future nurses, and they're not getting educated right now at all. And we have to be honest with ourselves. They are falling very far behind. To kids in private school, to kids in districts that are going four and five days a week, we are kidding ourselves if we think our kids are getting an education right now because they're not. So, and I am very appreciative to my kids' teachers that are trying their best, but it is not working for them or for us. So, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Mr. Dunn?
So that is all I have for hands raised at the moment. I'm going to move down to the phone numbers since those people cannot do anything unless they just unmute and start talking. So I'll just go down and call those numbers. If that's all right?
Certainly.
So phone number ending in 9861, area code 603. If you hit star six, unmute yourself, state your first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment. I also understand with the phone numbers, if they're not listening directly on the phone and they're watching it through Concord TV, there could be a 30-second to a one-minute delay before they hear their number called. So I'll leave a little bit of time. If I get nothing, I'll move on to the next one. I'm going to move on to the next one. And if it chimes in, it chimes in. Phone number ending in 4893, area code 603. If you hit star six, unmute yourself, state your first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment. Okay, phone number ending in 5787, area code 603. If you have a comment, hit star six. Say your first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment. Phone number 5787. I see you're unmuted. Go ahead and make your comment.
Oh, okay. So, you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, state your first name, last name, and where you're from.
Great, thank you. My name is Chris Russell, and I'm a paraprofessional at Runlet. I'm in-person every day, and I live here in Concord. Let me first say, I'm enlivened to watch, you know, the board taking this matter of vacation and staffing during the time of COVID-19 so seriously. I agree with Superintendent Murphy that teachers have done an amazing job implementing mitigation and supervising halls. Paraprofessionals have also done an amazing job implementing mitigation, monitoring classes while assisting special education teachers with one-to-one in-person and remote instructions, and shifting to another role at a moment's notice when there is a sudden shortage. With so many moving pieces, it seems the district has been very committed to contact tracing and making things as safe as possible. I also want to thank the superintendent for including all staff under the umbrella of essential worker, a recognition that goes a long way in boosting morale among paras I know. During Tuesday's meeting, I listened to statistics outlining there will be more professional staff traveling than support staff during the holiday, that essential workers will not be required to quarantine following vacation to ensure staff numbers remain high enough to keep schools running. But while most schools are still in hybrid, there's a trend toward remote instruction in highly populated communities, and that we are not following the matrix we agreed to follow, which included the commitment to go remote should our community arrive at substantial transmission of the virus. I agree with Mr. Parker that without question, our schools are safer places than, you know, than many other places. And trust Mrs. Murphy when she has the courage to be explicit about the fact that parents do depend on schools to be babysitters, and perhaps the matrix itself needs to change. I agree, we can't make everybody happy. And I also agree with Mrs. Murphy that while this is a complex situation, to ask special educators, I will for students, support staff, to come in when it has been determined it is not safe to be at school. It's hypocritical at best. From parents, I heard primarily the sentiment that remote can be managed more efficiently than hybrid and allows for more time with students than hybrid, despite the fact that it's not in-person. Another parent remarked that off-days during hybrid derail students. All points seem to point to the idea that while we've done an unbelievable job balancing needs throughout this epidemic, both within and beyond school walls, it isn't enough to justify remaining in hybrid and ignoring the fact that we haven't been able to change our protocols and systems as quickly as the changing situation demands and might benefit from a more streamlined matrix and an instructional model with fewer moving parts such as one might find in remote. Add to this the fact that there are roughly twice the number of professional staff traveling during vacay to support staff. And as shortages arise in a hybrid situation, support staff will most assuredly be asked to fill shortage areas more than they already are, a situation that doesn't do much for the equity situation. Now, as for flip-flopping between the two and the concern that there may be too much of it if we go back to remote, the hybrid model is itself intrinsically a flip-flop. So I think to worry if flipping back to remote would be too disruptive for students, though the worry is real enough, is flawed logic. Kids are used to the flip-flopping now. And the reliability of the reasoning that they are not, I personally don't trust when it comes from parents who, rightfully terrified, don't want to face the light of how their kid being home puts pressure on them economically and makes them have to choose between their kid getting sick and staying sane and economically viable. Schools are pretty darn safe. But unlike our, you know, unlike an hour jaunt to the grocery store, you're spending seven hours in a school. So is it really safer? The school is one of the safest places for the greatest number of people, but it's not the greatest place for the safest number of people. Should a moderate level of safety be the model we follow as we make a decision on how to be safest? The rhetoric doesn't point to no, the logic does. Maybe mental health services can be a regular part of each remote day. Can we have structured remote check-ins every hour to keep kids engaged remotely, sort of like attendance? Six times a day, followed by follow-up emails and fixes on an hour-by-hour basis until baselines are established? I know that requires about six times the communication, but shouldn't there be that much more, especially now? While seeing people during hybrid has been mentally and socially healthy on so many levels, I think the responsible and ultimately healthiest thing to do now is to return to remote and remain there until a vaccine can be administered while beefing up outreach and mental health services to families in a socially-distanced manner. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
Okay. That's not my screen, so I got to figure out what that's about. But I don't want to mess up anything because we've got two more numbers. Phone number ending in 7774, area code 207. If you hit star six... 7774, area code 207. If you hit star six, unmute yourself, state your first name, last name, where you're from, if you want to make a comment. Okay, I'm gonna move on. Phone number ending in 6337, area code 603. If you have a comment, hit star six. State your first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment. Go ahead, 6337, I see you're unmuted. Go ahead and make your, state your name, where you're from, and make your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead, state your name and where you're from.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Seems it's having a little bit of issues today. I just wanted to leave with, leave you guys with some food for thought as we're probably getting close to the end of this meeting. We're talking about 11 or 12 days of in-person learning that the kids may or may not miss if we go to full remote. We want the kids to go to school. However, I cannot see sending my kids to school if teachers and families are not quarantining after they travel. I asked my kids how they felt, and they agreed that even though they love going to school, that they would think that we should be full remote until after the holidays. I personally don't want to go full remote for the rest of the year, just so people can travel over the holidays. I'd rather have it a short time period, maybe through January 11. Our numbers are low right now with students, but I wonder if our numbers are low with families outside of students. With the 300 cases today, how many of those are family members of kids in school that had positive cases? I think that we should go full remote through January 11 to keep everyone safe for the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn, do we have anyone else?
So, one more. Phone number ending in 9141, area code 603. If you have a comment, go ahead and hit star six. State your first name, last name, where you're from, and go ahead and make your comment. No, they logged off. That was easy. All right. Other than that, unless I'm missing something, I don't see any. Hold on one second. I don't want to say that. Yeah, I don't have any hands raised at the moment. I don't see any.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Do we have anyone who would have emailed any questions in to Concord Info that you are aware of? And do we have anyone here in the auditorium that would like to ask a question or make a comment at this time? Who hasn't had the opportunity before? Thank you.
So, I have a question. How do you want to handle the Concord Info? Do you want me to read each of them?
Uh, if someone asked, made a comment, or a question in, Mr. Dunn, I think you should read it.
All right. So, since 5:04 PM, these are comments that I've seen that are not read, or have not been forwarded to you. So, from Kristin Van Oostern, please do not go change our students', our children's educational model again, parentheses, remote, so that the teachers and families can travel over the holidays. If there are teachers and families who prefer to go remote, I would encourage the district to find a way to accommodate these requests without disrupting our community's educational model. If our community is concerned about increasing community transmission and hospital capacity, I would hope that we can close indoor dining and other maskless activities before upending our kids and families again, unless we are certain the hybrid school model is causing community transmission or hospital capacity issues. Thank you, Kristin Van Oostern, Concord, New Hampshire.
Thank you for those comments. Next, Jack?
Ian McKinnon, hello. If there's a chance of going remote, if cases get worse, how is pivoting on a moment's notice going to be the best for teachers and students? We aren't talking enough about teachers. The anxiety of bringing COVID home to their families and loved ones is real. We would do anything to keep our students safe. Please help teachers keep their families safe. Teachers have provided, proved that they can give quality remote instruction via remote period at the beginning of the school year, exactly for a short period of time. If considering hybrid, you can consider letting the at-risk students come back, and let that be their family's decision, even if the other students stay remote. You are talking about how there haven't been, there hasn't been transmission in the schools. That could be because we haven't yet had to travel period like we are going to have in November and December. You cannot compare October to these next few months. Students are still coming to school and into class with cold and flu symptoms. Yes, they are being sent home, but it is unsettling for staff and students to sit and wonder if it's a cold versus COVID. We're talking about a short period of time for remote learning, not the entire year. Thank you for considering my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Next, Jack?
This is from Mary Mancini. Hi, I've worked at Christa McCullough School as a special education, a special educator for the past four years, and I wanted to offer some insight into the challenges our special education students and families of these, of those students face in the remote learning model. It is my hope that I can serve as a voice for those families and shed some light on the realities we face educating our vulnerable, our very vulnerable population during these times. For many families of special education students, particularly those that are considered high need, remote learning has been no easy task. It has been very, is very difficult for many of our students with emotional disabilities, autism, or medical impairments to fully access their, their learning in a successful way in the remote learning format from home. Given substantial efforts, both from the educators involved as well as the families, there are many students who simply require more direct, lengthy, in-person support in order to continue making progress. Many of these students have collaborative, thoughtful plans, which include various sensory, motor, positive behavior supports. These are significantly challenging for families to implement in the home setting, particularly when these, those families have more than one child who is learning remotely, or have more than one child with significant needs. Many of these students with high needs are also assigned an educational assistant for much of their school day, supporting them in multiple, very specific ways, including implementing instruction in the form of individualized, direct instruction programs or discrete trials. Furthermore, for our students with behavioral needs, our interventions and decision-making is highly influenced by our ability to track and use behavioral data daily as a school team. This tracking is simply not possible in the remote setting. Consequently, we are not able to make timely decisions based on behavioral data to improve student programming and supports in the remote setting. Finally, for many of these students, the use of-
Can you guys help with the, can you guys help with the?
I gotta find this one.
Laundry?
I could use some laundry.
The laundry must get done. No, thank you, Mr. Dunn. I know it's a learning task.
That's all right. Finally, for the, many of these students, the use of electronic learning platforms can be significantly challenging, particularly for those with physical handicaps or fine motor needs. For others, the use of electronics or screen time can be a behavioral trigger, which can quickly become a challenge for parents to manage. I realize that there are a multitude of concerns regarding in-person learning, but I wanted to express my support of pod-style learning. For students of vulnerable populations, particularly special education students, if we are able to staff a pod-style approach of learning for these students throughout the remote learning period, I truly believe these students can continue to access their learning in a manner that is most conducive to their individualized needs. This model, we, as we were able to see early this fall at Christa McCullough, proved to be successful, and also allowed us to adhere to safety guidelines in distancing and sanitation. Thank you. Sincerely, Mary Mancini.
Thank you.
Okay. Michael Bork, it seems in the chat that there are a lot of anonymous folks stating that teachers are afraid to voice their concerns because they are worried about their jobs. The quote, "Opinions and decisions of staff have been strong-armed," it seems. This is a temporary solution. It's only a short-term, remote decision. Marissa Parent of Perrant, we also need to consider that many have family members coming from outside of New England to visit during the holidays. Those visitors may be required to quarantine, if it does not mean that the entire household they stay with is necessarily going to quarantine. And lastly, Stephen Johnson, hi there. I want, I just wanted to get a parent's perspective out there. When they say 80% are hybrid and 20% are remote, does, that does not mean that 80% of parents are happy with the hybrid right now. I was one of those parents who thought the first attempt at full remote in the spring was a failure. So, in the summer, I did one hybrid. Then they chose to go full remote, which irked my parents, many parents at the time. But a funny thing happened during those weeks in September, full remote. It went very well, and so smooth that the kids were receiving four and a half days of full engaged instruction through Zoom classes. So, at that point, many parents' minds changed, and I feel the board is out of touch not understanding this. Because the decision was to switch to hybrid, which the plan was not initially clear, that hybrid then suddenly meant only two days of live teacher instruction. Sure, those two days in school is great, but those other two and a half days missing out on what they were receiving in full remote is a huge loss. So, now, given the choice, after really seeing the two models, the crystal clear choice is full remote, not only because of the reasons given here, but also add the COVID numbers are skyrocketing right now, and holiday travel for teachers and students sounds like a nightmare when many of us are trying to do the right thing and stay put, and not go to see extended family during this time. I think if you were to put out a vote for all parents, many want, many what was working so well in September plus is the safer option. I just feel many of these board members speaking in favor of hybrid are completely out of touch of how parents feel, and these are our kids. Thanks, Stephen Johnson. That's all I have for the Concord Info at SUA. I'm sure these will all get forwarded to you again by London in the morning, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Dunn, for reading them. I know that's challenging, and, but I think it was important for us to hear those before we discuss later, or our decision a little bit later today. Do we have anybody else waiting in our lobby, or with a hand raised that would like to make a comment before we move on?
I do not see any.
Thank you for your efforts.
One more. I have my hands up, but carry on.
No, I was just going to say, I want to thank everybody in the community for their comments, and for patiently waiting to, to be able to make your comments. We, we greatly appreciate, you know, your willingness to share your thoughts with us, and, and your views, and it helps us a great deal as we consider what our next steps are going to be. Thank you, Mr. Dunn, for doing that. And at, at this point, do we want to take a, a five-minute break before we come back and discuss, or is everybody ready to go straight into it here? Okay, let's, then, Ms. Higgins.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. I move that we support Superintendent Murphy's plan to begin, to have hybrid education continue with this modification. We continue it through December 18, and the two weeks following the Christmas break, the district goes remote to address the concerns that are very real and expressed by our families around potential spread of COVID, and giving people time to quarantine. That's my motion.
So, your motion would be to have all of our schools remain hybrid through December 18, and then go, is it go?
It would be the two weeks following vacation, we would be remote.
Okay, so, December 18, actually, though, I think vacation doesn't start until the 23rd?
Oh, then that's what I meant, whatever the last day of school is.
Okay. Is that the 23rd? Am I correct?
I just assumed it was Friday, so that's my mistake.
Okay. So, that you, we would go hybrid through December 23, and then do the first two weeks back from vacation, which?
January 4th to the 18th.
January 4th?
January.
Second? So, oh, to the 22nd. Sorry, 23rd is the first day off, right?
Right.
And then so, remain hybrid through December 22nd, and then the first two weeks coming back from vacation be remote. Do I have someone who wants to second that motion before we discuss?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Parker. Let's have a discussion. Anyone wish to discuss that? We're basically into, at this point, we're basically into discussing, you know, what we want to do. Is it remote? Is it hybrid? And what the dates are?
I just felt like, if we have a, if we have a motion, we have something specific to discuss and modify, and, and get moving along. What I've noticed-
That is entirely appropriate.
Yeah. What I've noticed tonight is that a lot of, a lot of the comments have been around general unhappiness with, with current times. Lots and lots of philosophical comments on how to fix it. And really, what this meeting is about is Thanksgiving to Martin Luther King Day, and what do we do during those, this period of time. So, my point in making a motion is to keep us focused on this piece. And I just felt that they're, you know, anyway, that's what's-
Thank you. Thank you for explaining your motion. Actually, Ms. Poinier, and then Mr. Parker, and then Ms. Cannon. Jack, what's up?
You have Chuck with his hand raised.
And, I'm sorry.
Even though you can't, Sam, I just want to-
Thank you, thank you for showing me that. So, okay, so-
Thank you for having my back, Mr. Dunn.
I got you on my second screen. I got you, brother.
All right. You're all back on the screen there, Mr. Crush. I'm sorry. We will get to you, definitely. So, Ms. Poinier?
Three things. First, I think we need to know with certainty if we're going to proceed under the hybrid plan, what parents can do who no longer feel comfortable sending their children to school. Number two, I would like to know, since, since the decision-making matrix is, since it's difficult to understand for some why the decisions are being made the way they're being made, what are the trigger points? We really, because I, given the, that the level of community transmission is already substantial, are we waiting for the school impacts? Are we, are we waiting for an, an outbreak? What is it gonna take? Wait, what am I trying to say? I don't want us to go remote under an emergency situation. If we, if it looks like we're gonna need to go remote, let's have a few days to, to plan it. It's only fair to families and teachers, and that's that. And then, on a slightly different topic, my daughter said to me this morning, as she was leaving, she said, you know, Mom, if we sneeze, we have to go to the nurse. And I don't know if that's completely true, but nevertheless, I think the nurses are seeing an awful lot of traffic these days, and I understand that they are probably stretched pretty thin right now. I also know that we don't have a lot of redundancy in the nursing staff, and also that we can't open a building if we don't have a nurse. So, I just want us to all be aware, and to, you know, just know that the nurses, we, they, they haven't come up tonight, and, but they're the one, they're the frontline workers in our schools. You know, other than the teachers, everyone's a frontline worker these days, right? But the nurses are actually responsible for, you know- But the nurses are actually responsible for, you know, making sure that if a kid comes in with symptoms, that they get properly isolated and traced and, you know, parents notified, taken home, and everyone protected during that whole time. So I think, I don't know if, if there's any discussion to have, other than, are we sure that our staffing levels are appropriate? And is there anything we could or should do to have a little more capacity for the nursing staff? Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a lot of comments, but I think this is the point of discussion. So I guess, I don't know what, I don't know if the nursing staff actually can be answered at this point, but it's an important thing to bring up. But the two questions that you did pose that I would, I would like Superintendent Murphy to answer, if she would be so kind, is, first of all, what would trigger a remote? I'm taking them in reverse order here, but what would trigger a remote?
Well, I think we've said all along that we would look at the numbers in our school. I mean, if we have a cluster or we have an outbreak, we would, we would, we would have to close that school. We would have to shut down. But, I mean, I do want to take some time over the next week to review the, the matrix, decision make, matrix that the state has offered. As you know, I said to you earlier that we've updated, they've updated that, so I'd like to be able to work on that. But it includes student attendance, it includes staff attendance, and it includes if there's numbers of students. So we would, I'll bring that back to you to use as a, as a tool, because there's so many other factors, but I will bring that back to you and use as a tool for us to discuss should we need to go to full remote.
Okay. Superintendent, the public health, that we were, I was referring to earlier, defines a cluster as three individuals confirmed with COVID-19 who are part of a related group of individuals who had a potential to transmit the infection to each other. Is that?
That's right.
Is that the term, is that the definition you would be using as well?
That would be a cluster.
Okay.
And, and depending on where that is and how broad that is, then you would move to, to a remote situation. But it is done on individual buildings. I mean, if nothing else is happening in any other building, do you close down your, all your school district because there's one outbreak at, at one particular school? So those, those are the kinds of decisions that you have to make.
Okay, thank you. And your other question, which is, which I think has been asked before, and I guess, I guess it's probably the optimal time to answer that, and that is, if this, if this motion were to pass and we would be hybrid up until the, the beginning of the Christmas break, for parents who wanted to switch to a remote situation, and there could be, as we heard tonight, several, many, what would they do? What would be the process?
We would ask them, and I'll, I'll make sure that that gets communicated to them this weekend in my, my weekly letter to them, that we would ask them to meet with their principal. And, you know, Donna and I had a chance to already talk to the principals about that, and they have been, I think you heard a little bit of that tonight. They are addressing that, those requests. And, and so we want to, we want to come up, if we have more than, than we can handle right now, then we have to come up with another solution to be able to either get another teacher in there. We have Mr. Prince put out a request to Plymouth, because we're at the end of the semester, and, and we'd be able to utilize some newly gra, new graduates that could help us. So we also have some permanent subs that we could use to create that. The problem is, is pulling them away from their teachers. That's the hard part for a lot of parents.
But if family wanted that, then that.
But if that's what they wanted, then they would have to accept that there was a different teacher, right?
Yeah. I think that may be one of the things, that if you go remote, you may have to change teachers, because it seems to me that we could create a remote class.
For the break.
We would just have to sign a teacher.
Right.
Well, actually, it would probably, when does the next semester start?
Near the end of January is the semester break.
So, so going remote, and then we would, I assume, give everyone the option, and then someone who's already remote, if more people wanted hybrid, they may not be able to come back. They would be remote.
Right.
Because people would be kind of in the area where they are at the time.
And you heard from Susan tonight that, you know, she has addressed those needs from parents, and that, you know, we would, we would need to, we would need to be able to figure out a way to provide them with the remote.
Okay.
I think that's a fair request. I mean, I understand the incredible anxiety that, that folks have right now, so.
Seven through 12, though, can, can.
No, seven through 12 isn't the problem. It's the elementary.
Right, that's what I was, I wanted to clarify that.
Right, it's the elementary.
If they want to stay home and do their learning online, they have the ability.
Right, and we've created these little, these classes, and they left their teacher to be in a remote, in a remote class. So what, in the elementary, they've already done that. Number of parents already did that. But one of the things that we heard from was them not losing their teacher that they have. That's hard.
That may be impossible, but to clarify, so that, and it was a very good point that Ms. Higgins brought up, is that currently, and looking forward to a group of parents who may want to go remote, seven on is, you don't see a problem with that?
No, no, we don't. We, it's the elementary, and they should contact their principal of the school and let them know that they're interested in moving to a remote model for their youngster.
And from K through five or six, K through six, they, you know, they should contact, but it may mean, they may have to give up having their teacher. They may have to go to a completely new teacher in that.
That's right, that's right, Gina.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification. Other questions on this particular topic before we get into other ones? Ms. Cannon was first, I believe, and then Ms. Walsh, and then, oh, I'm sorry. And don't, and Mr. Crush, I haven't forgotten you either, but, Mr. Parker, yes, if this is related to exactly the same topic, I want to stay on this topic without moving to something else.
And which topic is that?
The topic of, what would parents do if they wanted to switch?
Okay, it's not about that.
Okay, well, I won't forget you.
But I'm still up next.
Someone else who wants to follow up, because I don't want to leave this topic. It was an important topic that has been brought up both on Tuesday night and tonight. Ms. Cannon, then.
So, I just want to be absolutely clear, because this is different from what we heard on Tuesday night. Tuesday night, we were told that it wouldn't be possible for people to do that, because we didn't have staffing to do that, to have parents choose for their kids to go remote. So I want to be absolutely clear that if parents decide that they are not comfortable sending their kids to school, they can choose a remote option starting when, and that it will be approved, not it will be conditional on whether or not we can find staff, but Tuesday, we heard that was not going to be an option because of staffing. I want to make sure, absolutely clear, that that is now an on-the-table option for parents.
When we looked at grades K through six, the only class that gave us a difficult time in terms of remote was grade four, because we were full. We have spots that they can move into, so they haven't had requests. You heard those numbers from, from Donna tonight. We didn't have requests in some buildings and in some grade levels, but if we have them now, there are seats that are available that those youngsters can go in. That's number one. Number two, we will make every effort, I'll work with the principals, to be able to find some staff, to be able to cover those classes that go to remote. And we're working on that right now, because we know we need that staff. I, I, I don't know what else to say, Gina, right? I, I, we're trying to.
It depends on what you said on Tuesday.
Well, yeah, it has changed, but I didn't say that on Tuesday. I said we had spots. I indicated that. There was fourth grade we were, we were struggling with, because that was full.
Ms. Walsh.
My question.
Okay. Mr. Kroto.
Okay, so, having been on that side of the table a number of times over the hundred years, it's very important that we, as a board, don't put our superintendent or our principals or our HR person in a bind that they can't fix. In the interest of trying to, you know, and I understand, you know, Gina, I truly do, but there are some things we just can't predict. We can't hit this target sometimes, it's COVID. And to say that we'll, that we'll guarantee that kids can switch from one group to another without knowing if we can even find staff, if we can find space, it's putting them in a bind that, that you're going to be sitting here after I'm gone, talking about some more. And you don't want to do that. I, I, I think the answer that Superintendent Murphy is giving right now is as honest as it can be, we'll try to do it with what we have. And, and that's all it can be. And that's the real answer. That's as good as it gets.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, and then Mr. Crush.
Well, the reason I seconded that amendment is that, that I, I believe that, first of all, I value what everyone's saying in this community, how much they value education and how much they have very strong opinions on, on whether we are remote or hybrid. And I'd just like to say that we all care for kids. This isn't us against them. But I also believe that people do have the choice to stay out of school if they choose to. But if we go completely remote, the people that really need to go to school won't be able to. That's not a choice I'm really happy making. It's not, I'm a lifelong educator. This is the worst situation I've ever faced in education. Of, the reason we have a hybrid model that only meets a couple of days a week, we forget, we can't fit them all in at the same time and be safe. But there are, and I strongly believe this, the reason I want to go hybrid, I think schools are the safest place to be, that the communities are unsafe. And we don't have to go to Massachusetts, you're right. There's a bloom around here. You don't have to go to Rhode Island, but they're safest in schools. And so, I don't know what to say, except that I think the hybrid model allows people to go to the school that wants to. We're not saying you can't go. And going remote, that's what we'd be doing. Hybrid allows with some, with some choices. Remote doesn't allow anyone, and I'm not willing to put myself in the position to make those decisions for parents. I think that's unfair for the people that really need to be in person. And I see those kids, and I know what she's talking about. So.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Crush?
Uh, yeah, so, I'm trying to structure my questions. I've been making notes all night long. I'll be very candid with you. And I, I usually come in, and I think I said this earlier, I usually come into these meetings with some idea of kind of which side of the question I follow. And, and maybe it's because my tenure's ending, and maybe this is a good thing or a bad thing, I don't know. But I, I came into this as kind of a blank slate tonight, and I spoke with Superintendent Murphy earlier, and kind of, and kind of shared that with her a little bit. So just a couple of questions and a couple of thoughts. One is, I want to thank the teachers and students and parents they came forward, because, you know, I've heard, and I think we have to acknowledge, that we're in the middle of a global pandemic, and there are a lot of tears being shed, and it's hard for everyone. It's hard for students, it's hard for teachers, it's hard for parents. You know, one day a week, I am responsible teaching, doing remote teaching with my daughter, who has a significant disability, who's a student at Runway. And there are days I'm, you know, contorting my body to hold a laptop while she's on her bed and make it work. So I think everyone is trying, and it's not ideal under any situation. And there were some themes that came out tonight, you know, people were talking about equity, equality, which are two different things, by the way. And I think really, we want to focus on equality, that everyone has the same opportunities, and the focus on the fact that this is remote, I mean, this is temporary, excuse me, this is temporary, if we do go, if we do go remote. But I guess I have some questions, some questions for Superintendent Murphy, as I kind of formulate my decisions and what I think is best, in my heart of hearts. So, and this came up, and I've had some people ask me this, so I'll ask the question. Does our reimbursement from the state, our pupil change any if we go remote versus hybrid?
The reimbursement, any difference?
Sir, I believe Mr. Crush is asking a financial question with regards to reimbursement differences that we would have.
No.
Yeah.
There's no difference. We, the adequacy money that we receive is all based on our total student, student enrollment. Doesn't matter whether they're in hybrid or whether they're in remote.
But does it impact that if we say are in remote and we have less attendance when attendance is taken, does that impact, does that impact it or not?
No, no, it's not going to, again, it's bodies, numbers of students in each grade level that we report out.
Okay, okay, so there's no financial difference, so there's no, okay. And then, if we do go remote, have we given thought to staff and such as, and this is, you may not be able to answer this tonight, but to staff such as bus drivers, custodians, positions like that, if we're remote, that should potentially affect their paycheck? Or their position, have we given thought to that if we do go remote and have a plan for that?
Oh, yes. A lot of talk and a lot of discussion, because we're trying to work out a memorandum of agreement with them around these very issues. And we have done everything, when we went to remote in the beginning of the year, we did everything to find work for them. We had, we switched para-professionals around so that they could have work when their student wasn't, wasn't going to be in school or it wasn't appropriate for remote. We had, we actually had bus drivers running food and supplies to students all over town. We brought in, remember now, we brought in youngsters, our vulnerable youngsters, we brought in CRT, so we had bus runs there. Couple of the school districts ran into a jam with bus drivers, they couldn't find them. We, we, we actually rented out our buses and had drivers, they, we got reimbursed for that, so that kept our drivers going. So I have to tell you, we, we worked really hard. Same with our cafeteria workers, preparing, I think, well over 500 meals and 500 lunches, 500 breakfasts every day, and bag them and get them out into the community. So we, we kept everybody working. My, my worry is, if we stay in remote totally for a long period of time, what does that really mean? I mean, I have.
Right.
You have, you have, and I have responsibility to our taxpayers. And that has, and that has come up. I mean, I've gotten a few emails around, you know, that issue. So I'm, I'm very cognizant of that, but we worked hard to keep everyone busy.
No, and, and look, kudos to you and your team. I can't trust this enough, and this is not going to be, and I'm going to share my opinion in a minute. This is not an easy decision that any of us have to make. And I do want to give a kudos also to Steve Rosenberg and the CRTC, because, you know, just, I've heard nothing but positive about that, about that program and about people feeling safe there and things like that. So, so please, I want that recognized. However, or and, I'm opposed to Barb's motion, because I, I think, look, the numbers, we have 300 and plus cases today in New Hampshire. I, I think that when we, when the governor mandated in March that we, that we closed all schools to state, it was much less than that. Now granted, we have a much greater understanding of, of the virus at this point, and I, and I like to think that we are smarter as a community about how to handle things. And I like to think that we are smarter as a community about how to handle things. But I am, you know, I have an opinion of what we should do, but I think at this point, I can't in good faith support the hybrid model. I don't think it makes sense for our community, and plus, I don't think it makes sense for our teachers and our associates or staff. I think that truly in my heart of hearts, that I don't have a clear understanding either of when we would go remote. I certainly understand that you want to look at the matrix, Kathleen, and certainly respect that. With that said, I don't think we can, that we can fully continue to embrace the hybrid model when I feel like, you know, I feel like we're looking at storm, cloud storms on the horizon, and we're not really paying full attention to them. So I'm going to have to oppose, and I'll be voting against Barb's motion. And granted, look, everybody on the board cares greatly and wants to do the right thing. There's no doubt among that. There's no doubt that Kathleen and her team want to do the right thing, the teachers, the paraprofessionals. But I am not going to be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crush. Ms. Walsh.
Thank you. She needs the microphone.
Of course, thank you.
You know, I think I share frustration that a lot of people have that we're in this situation, and I wish the state was taking more aggressive action so that transmission rates weren't so high. I think schools should be the last place to close, not the first. You know, there's been some talk about babysitting, and we shouldn't keep schools open to babysit. 1.6 million mothers have left the workforce as of September. We had a social compact, and schools are part of that, because our children are legally required to be in them. I think people made reasonable expectations that they could have jobs and pursue them. I think there are issues that we need to address. I think we've heard a lot tonight about problems with remote that aren't, or hybrid, that are not related to vacations. And I think we should have a separate survey and forum to address the remote, hybrid issues with the middle school and the high school, and to see whether there are other models we should be looking at for those schools. I think we need to come together again, I would hope soon, to consider a new matrix so that people do have an understanding of, that it's not going to be a snow day type call, that we'll get, you know, that we won't all get calls at 5:00 AM, that school's not happening for the next two months. And I think we need to, you know, have a definitive answer and plan for families that want to switch to remote, because the old matrix is defunct. But there are only 60-ish in-person days this year for elementary school. We're all going our personal experiences to some extents. We have happy days, which are in-school days. We have okay days, which are our remote homeschool days, and we have days of dread, which are Zoom school days. I brought my Zoom school schedule from the beginning. This is 12 different changes of routine for a second grader over the course of a day. I am very blessed with my job, that I was, I am able to work from home. I am taking, I was taking leave because I couldn't manage that. I had to be listening at all times to know what the next assignment was, was the next thing. This is really hard for people to keep going. And to lose those two days a week where we can work is a big thing for a lot of families. So I would not add the two weeks of vacation, but I'm willing to go along with that.
Motion can be modified. I'm stuck on it.
You've only been in hybrid a month, right? I mean, these changes are difficult.
Mr. Crush?
I don't know if Danielle was...
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Cruto and then Ms. Smith.
Okay, well, I just, I have a, so the motion talks about December 22nd to January...
Yeah, 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 18.
January what?
The last day of remote would be January 18. So it's a Christmas vacation and a two-week quarantine type.
Got you. Okay. I wanted to be clear on that. So what I'm hearing pretty darn clearly tonight is that we need, if we're going to stay in hybrid, we need to do some work. You know, it's not working as well as some parents think it should. Now, I have complete faith and trust in my fellow, you know, administrators, but the message seems to be pretty darn clear that from, at least the folks that spoke today and write to us, that it doesn't work as well as maybe I thought it was working. So I'll say that just personally. So if we're going to stay in hybrid, it seems like it needs to have some focus of attention to satisfy some folks. And that's a small percentage, I realize that, and... But I'm going to support this, because I think it's a great compromise. I think we may even learn something. We may learn that, holy moly, maybe fully homeschool, you know, should be the way we do it in those, in those weeks. I think it doesn't give quite the amount of time that I was worried about having to vote for or against previously. It's a, it's a good motion, I think, and I'm going to support it.
Part of my thing around that two weeks in January is that we're also getting into winter, so more and more classes and things will be inside, more and more people are inside. Just looking at the normal flu season and such, that's often the time where a lot of kids are sick.
Ms. Smith.
So I appreciate you starting the discussion, but I also am disappointed a bit with the motion. We're talking about two pretty important things, the travel issues and these spiking numbers. And I don't think staying hybrid is the responsible thing to do, and I think we heard over and over and over again from people who agree with us that hybrid is not what they want right now. And I understand we got off a little bit on a tangent about the ins and outs of how hybrid worked, but I think the message over and over again from these parents and students and teachers was that this is not what people want during these times. As I think Ms. McHugh said, it's a freaking pandemic. And I think I've said that to my own family pretty much every day for the past, I don't know, eight months. This is how I see it. This is temporary while people are traveling, and hopefully numbers, hopefully they go down, but this is because of people traveling. As a benefit, students are also getting increased instruction time. So it's like a win-win there. As another benefit, our teachers are safer because they are hopefully teaching remotely. Our kids are safer, kids who didn't travel, who have to be in school and didn't quarantine are safer. People who did travel are safer. We have planned consistency, so we know in a week we're going to be remote. It's not overnight phone calls, snow day phone call. We all can plan better. Working parents can plan better. Teachers can plan better. Kids can keep their teachers. All kids can keep their teachers. It's not a back and forth and trying to find kids, find new classrooms for elementary kids, and some kids can't move potentially. We all can keep our same teachers. We're not honoring that rubric that we set forth, that the district set forth in September. Numbers have changed, I get that, we understand things better, things have changed, but we made decisions as parents based on that rubric, based on that matrix. That's why I'm not supporting this. I think it's important to listen to what people are saying, and I understand there's people on both sides, but predominantly, the people have spoken tonight in favor of remote, and I just can't favor this motion tonight.
Mr. Crush? Done, Ms. Cannon.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you. So I'm wondering, in listening to Ms. Smith, who made excellent points, I'm wondering if possibly, and I have a thought, I'm wondering if we could, if Barb would be open or the board would be open to a compromise, an additional compromise. I'm wondering if we adopted hybrid, I mean, excuse me, remote, the Monday before Thanksgiving, returning whatever the day after the Martin Luther King holiday is in January, and during that time period, it would allow us to do two things. The administration, the administration then report back to the board, and we could look at the numbers. Who knows, maybe there will be good news at that time, and things will improve. And during that time period, we could also be looking at a way to do hybrid better, a way to improve that and hear what the majority of people said tonight. It would also give us a chance, if we're going to continue with remote due to the will of the board and due to just being proactive to this rather than reactive. So it could do two things. It could give us a time to take a pause, a time to look at how we do hybrid and remote, depending upon what's necessary, given where we are, given the will of the board. And it could also keep, hopefully keep everyone safe and healthy during this time. So that was going to be my motion, which is, which is not that far from Barb's motion.
It's totally the opposite of my motion.
No, it's not. No, it's really not.
It's totally opposite.
No, it's really not.
No, thank you, Mr. Crush. It's exactly Barb's motion, but with totally different dates.
Yeah, it's not my...
But I appreciate your input, because that would be a new motion, I think, at this point. But I did promise Gina that she would be next, and then I will come back to you. So Ms. Cannon.
And I don't think it's not your motion, Barb.
If mine fails, you can make a new one.
Okay. I was just going to ask what the procedure is for asking if Barb would be willing to modify her motion.
I would be, but that wasn't a modification, that was a completely...
Right. But I'm just, well, and it's sort of running off of Chuck's, because I think looking at 11:23 to 1:18 makes sense. But I don't know what the, I'm new to the board, so I don't know what the protocol is for asking whether we can modify the dates of your motion.
You would amend the motion, and we would vote on that amendment, I believe is the proper way of doing that.
Barb would have to agree, no?
But changing from hybrid to remote isn't amending a motion, it's the other.
Once the, once her motion is here with the board, it is now our motion, and we can modify it or not modify it, accept it and reject it. At least that's my interpretation of Robert's Rules of Order, and that's so. So her motion is out, we are discussing it. If there is, if there is an amendment to modify that, we would vote first on the amendment, and then after that, or any other amendments, and then after that on the motion. I think that's the correct procedure.
That's it?
Okay, thank you. So, go ahead, you can make your point.
Can I move to amend Barb's motion to change the dates to 11:23 to 1:18?
So a hybrid?
No, to go remote?
But my, my motion wasn't to go...
Oh, okay, then I misunderstood your motion completely. I thought your motion was to go remote from 12:22 to 1:18.
Right, it was a, yeah, right.
Well, as a point of clarification here, right? She would not be going remote from 12:22. We would go on Christmas break on 12:22, and that would continue, or on 12:23, roughly, or somewhere in there, 22, and that would continue until, am I correct, January 2nd? Is that our current break?
That's the vacation, yeah.
Right. So we would be on vacation from 12:22 to January 2nd. And then she would make classes fully remote from January 3rd, 4th, 4th, sorry, I'm not looking at my calendar, 4th through the 15th, I believe, because...
18th.
But isn't the, uh, am I, I'm wrong on Martin Luther King Day? When is?
MLK is 18.
So we would, I don't know, do we have off the 18th?
Yes.
Yeah, so it would be through the 15th, we'd already be off the 18th. So her motion would be from the 4th through the 15th. And so those are, so the only remote days, or the only days she is voting for us to go remote would be the two weeks after the Christmas break.
So I'm all fine with dates, changes the whole motion, so...
So that's, so she's picking those two days, and you want to amend those dates, is what you're saying?
Which makes the whole thing remote, which changes the motion.
Okay, so, so your point is you would not agree to that, and we'll have to do it in two pieces?
Because the hybrid piece is important to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I didn't know what the process was.
Thank you for your point of clarification.
That's why I laughed at Chuck, because I thought, what's he talking about?
So, are you good?
I'm also trying...
I'm good for now.
Ms. Poynier.
I feel like what we heard tonight was, just like the other night, split right up the middle, people who really appreciate the in-person of hybrid and people who really miss the synchronous hours of remote learning. A lot of it seems to depend on the age of the kids, so I think we should consider, as Chuck had suggested at some point, splitting up the school grades and maybe taking the high school and/or the middle school remote first. And I don't even feel ready to vote on this because of that divide. And since Thanksgiving is still a couple of weeks away, and I, I'm not wanting to prolong this to torture anybody, but I kind of feel like we need to, you know, we've got so many emails, you guys, people who are watching, we heard from a lot of you, and we heard from a lot of people tonight in person and, and on the, on the call. And I would like to put out a short but thoughtfully crafted survey, both to the teachers and to the families, and could you please mute yourselves, whoever's like tutting in the mic?
Jack, could you mute everybody? There's not public input at this time.
And again, I really don't want to drag this out, but I am not a public health professional. I do not feel equipped to make this decision for the entire community. I also am not at all convinced that the families and the teachers all have the same comfort level with staying with hybrid. I'm comfortable staying with hybrid, but that's just me. And so I think it would not be a bad idea to cool our heels and meet again in a week or so. And in the meantime, what we have is anecdotal. What we have is the people who have the confidence to reach out to us, to speak to us or write to us, who are not fearful of any ramifications in their workplace or whatever. That's how I feel. Thank you.
All right. Before I get to you, Barb, I just want to jump in here. So I do believe that she'd have a right to table this or to defer the vote, and we would vote on that first before we voted on any of the other items.
You can make a butt.
I don't know, do you know? I'm looking for anybody.
Your motion takes precedence.
Yes. So that would take precedence, and I think you can table it or you can postpone it, defer it to a specific date, and that would take precedence. So that is an option that you can make a motion on that would over, that would take precedence over her motion. But before we get to that, and I'd like to just have a little bit, just some discussion. And I'm going to, I'm going to recognize myself for a minute, because I haven't spoken on this yet.
I was just going to speak on waiting.
And this is, and you're next. You can be next, and that's, that's fine. This is the discussion I expected us to have. This is a, you know, this is pretty much going the way I thought. This is a very difficult decision. And I'm, I'm forced to think that what we're deciding here, at least from my, my view is, you know, are we going to vote a set period of remote that we are planning right now? We had talked about the fact that that helps some parents. I also am very sensitive to, to parents who, you know, no matter what level of remote is going to be, it's going to be difficult for them. But I'm also looking at the fact that the alternative to that is what we're choosing is to vote to push on as far as we can, knowing that the rates are increasing. And, and that, what we're going to be voting for in that case is a 24-hour notice before we go fully remote. Because as soon as we get three kids that are related, we're going to go. And that's, and so that's going to be a sudden and, and very quick transition. So, that's, it's, it's a tough choice. I think I'm finding myself in agreement with either Liza or Chuck, whoever mentioned the fact that I am inclined to consider the high school and middle school a little differently than I am elementary schools. I'm, I feel like, you know, even if you took between whoever throughout January, or November to 23rd, whatever the date is that vacation, that vacation starts for Thanksgiving, which would actually be the 30th by the time we come back, and to January 15th, I think I counted, that's, that's nine days of hybrid for, and I don't see the nine days of, of hybrid being lost to remote that, as impactful for the, the high school and, and potentially the middle school. And the middle school, I'm less comfortable with, but the high school and middle school, than I am with the, the elementary schools. I just heard so much during the early part of this year about having elementary schools being fully remote. They just didn't work for parents, and it just didn't work for kids very much either. So, that's kind of where I'm coming down on this. Thank you for indulging me recognizing myself. So, at this point, Ms. Higgins?
So, two things. I want you all to close your eyes and think back to August 3rd, or 5th, or whatever it was. And it was about 11 o'clock at night, and we were going round and round and round on how to start the school year. And Chuck, you liked my analogy, I'm going to call you out on this. My analogy was, as a, as an athlete, if I want to win a race, I don't keep waiting around to make sure I'm healthy enough to train for it, or is it going to be nice weather? I pick the race, I pick the date, and I start training for it. So, part of the reason I feel we can't keep tabling this and pushing it off is we have to make a decision and plan for it. I'm very happy to modify my, another motion I thought of, when I was thinking, we need to get a motion on the table to discuss, because we need to make a decision. I don't think, I don't think waiting another week or two is fair to anybody. People need to be ready and prepared. I also agree very much, and actually mentioned to a teacher I was talking to today on the phone, that I thought a logical thing might be for middle school and 7th through 12th to go remote from Thanksgiving on. And, and elementary schools stay in school. I, I cannot, in good faith, take away the choices of those families to have their kids in school two days a week. Sometimes, that's as important as how much they're learning. So, I've tossed that around. I think the needs are very different. I used that analogy the other night in the, in the instructional committee meeting. That poster with the boxes, and the tall kid doesn't need any boxes. That's our high school students. They're academically able to go seamlessly between sitting at a desk and sitting at home. Then our middle school students, maybe they need a box. Maybe some of them need, need some help, and some of them don't. And our elementary school students need two boxes to see over that fence. I think you all know the poster I'm talking about. So, I agree, I think, I think there's a huge difference in what our students need. High school students can get by with a Band-Aid. Elementary school students need crutches and a splint. And so, how do we provide that as a district? So, those are, those are things I'm willing to either take away my motion or reframe the motion. But I, I don't, do not feel good about going home tonight, telling our community to wait until we figure it out. I think we're, that's what tonight's for.
Thank you. And I'm just going to add something, and that is, if I, when I said that I would be comfortable with the high school and middle school being remote, I was thinking in that remote sense of, of, yes, where our special needs and our most, and our most, our, our groups that are required to be here, just as we had decided at the early part of this year, that they would be included in that sort of a situation. So, just to clarify my position.
And that was mine as well.
So, Mr. Parker, did you have your hand up?
No, only that I agree that we should move this forward. You know, we're committing a ton of time. I don't want to go to 11 o'clock again. I do have to work with kids every day. And, you know, can we make a decision? The motion's been moved and seconded. You know, we, we don't all agree. I don't necessarily think the people that phoned in were all the people that I talked to this past week, many of whom were people without a lot of resources to stay home with their kids. And so, I'm, again, I like the fact that people contribute. This is awesome, that they come in and they call in. But I don't think it's necessarily representative of the whole community. And so, I'd like to move the motion.
Okay. Mr. Kroto.
So, we're talking about 10 days. And you said nine, I came up with 10 twice, so.
Okay, I'm probably, it's probably 10.
Nine and a half. But, talking about a small number of days. I, I, kids need to be in school. I just, that's been my career, kids need to be in school. I support the motion. It, it does still give us time to rethink how we want to proceed from thereon. I mean, we can start thinking about that tomorrow, regardless of our kids being in hybrid.
We think they'll back.
Chuck, can you mute him?
Some schools are doing.
And I think that also, I, I worry about the, well, I'll leave it at that. I support the motion, I think it's 10 days. We can start thinking about, you know, how to fix things starting tomorrow. I'm sure Catherine will anyway, because that's what she does for a living. You know, I, I think Danielle, you make great points, and I, I agree with many, many of them, and Liza as well, but, and I, I think we need to vote on it tonight too, as well. Thanks.
Well, at this point, we do not have any sort of motions to table or to defer, so we will be voting on this motion unless there is further discussion. Ms. Cannon. We definitely have to get more microphones.
Sorry, the only thing I would say, I mean, I'm very concerned about not covering Thanksgiving. The statistics show that more people travel at Thanksgiving than Christmas.
I just thought our numbers were bigger at Christmas.
I'm sorry?
The district numbers, when they asked teachers and families, the, the Christmas numbers were twice as much as the Thanksgiving numbers.
I'm just saying, if you look historically across the country, more people travel at Thanksgiving than they do at Christmas. So, I'm concerned that we're going to have significant travel at Thanksgiving and not have people coming back and quarantining, and we're going to see a huge rise, and we already are seeing a rise. So, is there a way that we can, that we can cover Thanksgiving with some semblance of something so that we can be safe as a community?
Thank you.
I think we would, I would agree with mandating quarantine. I don't think, I don't think a teacher should go to Pennsylvania for Thanksgiving and be able to come back and teach. I think there's the seven-day quarantine with a negative test, or a two-week quarantine. I don't, I don't think, as a district, we're looking at letting people come back. There's the honesty factor, but that's going to exist forever. People are going to lie.
But.
But I'd like to ask Kathleen then to address that, because.
We're changing the motion, I don't want to.
No, no, hold on, we're still on a discussion point. And, and at the point, at some point when we call a vote, we will either vote for or against that motion, or someone will amend it, right? But at this point, this is a discussion, and so I'm.
I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm trying to figure out how we can keep our community safe. But, my understanding was that teachers were going to be expected to return to the school upon returning from the holiday because they were essential, or critical infrastructure employees.
So, that is, that is a great point. And this is a, you know, because the Thanksgiving holiday, you know, I believe the superintendent indicated that, you know, for the people who said they were traveling, if we did not force them to return, we wouldn't have enough teachers to be able to contribute. And I believe that's the point from the other night that you're making. So, I guess, Superintendent, do you want to address that between? I know it's, the numbers we were looking at were teachers and staff.
So, when we looked at the numbers, elementary was fine. We wouldn't have any problem with that. If we had teachers that did not return and were on a seven or a 14-day quarantine, then we would be fine at elementary level. The middle school and the high school, we would be challenged. There's no question about it. We had, we had more staff members at that level indicating that they would travel. So, we could, you know, and I'm just trying to follow with some of your conversation here. We could have middle and high in, in remote.
That's seamless, correct, 7th through 12th? That would be a very seamless change.
Right, we could do 7th through 12th. Well, well, and then, and do the two weeks. And if we wanted to, we could bring them back right before Christmas, before the, for a hybrid, just to touch base with their, their teachers and so forth. And then, obviously, they'll go back out again for the holiday in two weeks after the New Year. So, if that's something that you would like worked out, I'm, I'm not here to like carve things in stone. I'm listening to you, and I'm more than willing to try to maneuver and bend as, as, as what the folks are saying. So, it's not, anyway, that's, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and we appreciate your flexibility. And we do not expect you to, to carve things in stone or, or to make our decision for us. Mr. Parker and then Ms. Smith.
By the way, I'm not trying to be argumentative, although I, I just disagree. Because I, I just fundamentally disagree. I do, I, I'm very worried about Thanksgiving from a standpoint of community transmission, and I think it's going to happen. That doesn't mean coming back to school isn't going to be safe. And I just don't agree, I just don't agree.
Well, and we can agree to disagree.
I'm not asking.
No, I'm just, we can agree to disagree.
Just saying that I disagree with that, because I believe, I think there's going to be community transmission, and you don't need to go to Massachusetts to get that community transmission. And I agree with all three of you. I'm very worried about that for my own safety, and I'm going to have to hold up. It doesn't mean I can't teach at my school when I'm well-protected and be with kids. And again, I don't want to make that decision for families, because I desperately care about keeping them safe.
Danielle and Chuck. Thank you, Chuck.
Oops, sorry.
I'll put it in the middle in case you want to talk.
Thank you. So, if we're potentially talk about 7th and 12th grade doing something different, where does that put 6th grade? Because they're in the middle school, they have a slight, they have a different schedule, they can't remote into classes. Do they go to run lit as well? And then, how does that impact the specials teachers? Are they, how does that work? The art teachers, the PE teachers, the paraprofessionals that maybe work with different students? I think setting us up for two different situations is confusing. And again, I think that if we're worried about community transmission, then we need to show it. And I think that this is the time, not the time to think about what we might do differently. I think this is the critical time when our numbers are really starting to get out of control, that this is the time that we do remote. Think about what we're going to do after Christmas to make hybrid better. I just don't understand the concept of community transmission increasing, so let's continue the way that we're going. I don't think it's safer.
Mr. Crush.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I really, really, you know, maybe I'm obtuse, and maybe I'm just tired. I don't, so I'm definitely tired, I hope I'm not obtuse. But I'm not understanding, like, I agree with Danielle. I don't understand how we, we're sitting here and make, and we're, we're struggling with, with this decision when we've already, and we're not including Thanksgiving, which, by the way, is, I understand that maybe our survey indicated that the teachers were going to travel more at Christmas. You know, we're going to have kids coming back from college, starting Thanksgiving, we're going to have a lot of people, we are going to have people travel, you know? And just because we hadn't had any transmission in the school doesn't mean it couldn't happen. There's a high chance of it happening over Thanksgiving through the holidays. So, to start with Christmas, I'm sorry, I just don't, I don't understand that at all. Secondary to that, or in addition to that, you know, we've, we've got to figure out, I mean, we do have, have vulnerable kids, and I understand that. But, but I'm just not really following what we're doing here. And I guess I respectfully disagree with Dave from a standpoint, he didn't want to make the decision for people. Well, I think people voted for us to make decisions. That's the way I view it. So, I'm very, you know, very comfortable in my decision of, or my position of remote, Thanksgiving till January, and then we can figure out all the rest. You know, if, if the rates were going down, I was hoping I would be, I said when we had this discussion, starting school, I said, "Look, I want to be proven wrong." And, to a degree, I have been proven wrong. But I also said I'm going to take the conservative approach, because I don't want to get the phone calls that a child or grandparent got very sick with COVID-19 and, God forbid, died. And I'm being graphic and blunt, but I, I think that's the way we have to look at it. And that's my respectful opinion. And we can go ahead, and I think we do owe it to people to vote tonight. I think we need to vote on Barb's motion. Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Kroto.
So, Mr. Crush, respectfully, I'm going to just respond to one of your comments. The reason that I think, Tom Kroto is sitting here thinking that we can still stay in hybrid and, and keeping kids' safety and teachers' safety in mind is because it's happening in our community, but not in our schools. And to think that, and I know that people will travel during Thanksgiving, and, and people have to understand that they should be honest about what they do when they come back. If we can't trust them, then we can't trust them. There's nothing we can do about that. But, we are, I, I don't have a reason to really expect that we're going to have a spike after Thanksgiving in our schools. We may, in the city of Concord, we may continue to spike in the county of Merrimack. If we do, then we know how we can make the snow call and, and stop it. So, you know, whether that logic is right or wrong, that's how I feel.
So, I guess.
You know, I think, you know, I think you're great, Tom.
No, so I guess, you know, I, I disagree with you in a little bit, Chuck, in the fact that I do see a difference between elementary school and the high schools. It has to do with their interactions, the amount of time that they, they spend in different areas. From the high school and then slowly working down is, they're very mobile. And so, and, and I don't think they would be hurt as much by remote. With regards to what Mr. Kroto said, we will be able to, I, I think we would be able to react to a cluster. I think that at that point, there would be about 15 to 30 kids that could get it though, because by the time you react, you're in pretty tough shape. That's a possibility. I hope I would be wrong on that. But, I am seeing that, and that we have higher cases now per week, or per every two weeks than we did in September. I think, I don't think that we can rely entirely on everybody being safe, so I think we have to consider that. And, and I am concerned about the Thanksgiving holiday as well. So, I still have several concerns, but I agree with everyone who says, with regards to fixing our, taking a look at fixing our remote and our hybrid for the next semester, that is something we should address, just not tonight. So, do we have anybody else who has anything they would like to say in our discussion before I call a vote?
Well, I.
Sure.
So, since I made the motion.
Microphone, please.
I, I have a pretty solid assumption that people who travel would quarantine. And if I need to. And if I need to add that into the motion, and I'm talking staff, not necessarily families, I can't, I can't, we're not here to control families. Based on the teachers and folks that I've spoken with that are concerned about these things, I don't know of, you know, 30 teachers that would lie about going away and not quarantine. I also don't think it's fair for us to ask them to come back. Listening to Kathleen discuss the fact that it wouldn't affect the elementary school at all, that it would affect the middle and high school, which, with the exception of sixth grade, which is shaky ground, would be a seamless transition. Their instruction wouldn't change, just where their butt was is what would change, where they're getting their instruction. They could, they could have the same teacher, the same schedule, the same everything from home. You know, what I would be willing to add to the motion, which maybe, I just didn't think I needed to, but if it would be easing the mind of the Thanksgiving piece, would be that we expect that staff members that travel are honest about it and quarantine. And we make the adjustments at the middle and high school that need to be made. And I will also address the fact that, you know, Danielle and Chuck, you guys both have amazing abilities to care for your kids in a home, in a remote situation. A lot of families that didn't come and talk here, that don't have the guts to come talk here or speak English well enough to come talk here, don't have those options. And so as much as I want to support families who want their kids home, I also have to support the families that can't speak up for the fact that they need their kids in school. I think it's just one of those things we could talk about all night long. So I'm willing to add in the expectation of quarantine by staff, absolutely, if that would, if that would make those of you on the fence feel better, because I think it's an assumption that I just assume would happen. I should learn you never assume.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I just want to add for personal clarification, I guess. I understand very deeply the struggles that parents have to make school work when they're working. I feel like I've gotten the comment a couple of times that I'm lucky that I can have my kids at home. We work very, very hard to do that. I work full-time and I work part-time on the weekends so that we can do that. And I know a lot of parents are making that sacrifice. So I am just a little bit taken aback by that, I think, but I just, I don't want to just keep going around and around on this. I do think it's time that we do some sort of a vote to, whether it's Barb's exact motion or some amendment to the middle school.
Chuck?
Mr. Crush.
He can talk.
Yeah, and, you know, I raised my hand and then I took it down after Danielle's comment, because I'm not going to go into how we make it work. But I am a little, somewhat appalled that, you know, I very much appreciate people who don't have options of having their kids at home. And I'm very sensitive and concerned with that, or to teach their kids remotely, rather. I'm not going to have to justify what we do and how we do it, but it's, you know, we all made decisions as families. So, you know, bottom line is, that's a little bit of a, that comment took me back a little bit, Barb, quite candidly, but I think we need to vote and move on.
Okay.
I'll apologize quickly. I certainly didn't mean any offense by it. I was just, you know, I know you're working your butts off to make it work. Some people work their butts off and it still doesn't work. So I was not trying to be insulting or judgmental at all, I'm just trying to balance it out. But I vote, I think we...
I think we can, unless, unless you wish to make an amendment...
Yeah, I do.
So at that point, you, we are, that would take precedence, so make your amendment.
So I will keep my motion the same in terms of when we offer hybrid, you know, hybrid from Thanksgiving to Christmas and then two weeks remote following the Christmas break, that part stays the same. What I will add to the, to the motion is that the expectation and requirement of staff who travel to observe quarantine guidelines upon their return.
Okay.
Because that's our little ones.
So there's an amendment, the amendment has been made to amend the motion to include the requirement that staff, that, and actually, any personnel that travel...
I mean, families as well, but they are, they have to.
So they are required to quarantine upon their return, and I guess it would be travel to places outside of New England?
Correct.
The New England states? And then...
Although I think you can't go to Connecticut now.
Well, that they are, they would be required to quarantine when they return. Is that your, is that a clear statement?
I think so, I see a couple of hands, so if it needs to be...
Okay, it needs to be...
I had a friendly amendment.
Sure.
I would just say that they would be required to follow the state guidelines on travel and isolation, and as opposed to the difference between quarantine and self-isolation, you know?
Keep it as simple as possible.
And what states will be in and out.
Because that comes under the state, under the guidelines, help.
And how are you going to believe people when they tell you they didn't go out of state when they really did? How are you going to follow those protocols?
So, Ms. Cannon.
Sorry, not to belabor the point, because we're, it's late. My understanding was that the governor is coming out with new protocols that were supposed to be released today. They weren't released today, but I would like to, whatever protocol...
Yes, are in place.
Is in place at the time that they travel or return or whatever, is the protocol that should be followed.
So we can amend the language, what they said.
Well, so your amendment would be...
To insist upon...
Require all the personnel that travel to follow the state guidelines regarding whatever travel they're in.
Right. Isolation slash quarantine at that time.
I'm not going to get into that, but if you can put that if you want to. I was just going to leave it at that, and then it'd be required to follow that.
Right.
Somebody, I hope, has written that down.
David, do you maintain a second on that, if I add the quarantine? Okay, thank you.
And so, the most, the amendment has, the motion for the amendment has been made. Is there a second to that amendment? Mr. Crush? Sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the amendment has been made, and thank you, Mr. Dunn, that it would require any staff or personnel that have traveled to follow the state guidelines regarding such travel upon their return. As made, the amendment was made by Ms. Higgins and seconded by Mr. Parker. Is there any further discussion, or can I call that to a vote right now? Okay, Mr. Crush, all right, so, Ms. Higgins, would you call the vote on the amendment?
Pam did raise her hand right then.
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, hold on.
I really don't want to belabor this, but I do think it would be helpful to hear from the superintendent if we believe that we are effectively closing the middle and high schools so that, because if that's what we're doing, I think we should tell people that's what we're doing.
Although if people don't travel, I mean...
So, so the point of discussion before we bring that to a vote is that if this amendment were to pass, would it effectively require the middle and high school to go remote, in your opinion?
If we use the numbers that we have right now, based on the survey that we did last week, then we would not have enough staff to open the schools, and we would have to be in remote.
Middle and high.
Thank you.
Middle and high school, middle and high school, I'm sorry, I meant to...
So, thank you. So, so Ms. Walsh, to clarify for those who are listening, yes, that would effectively, if this amendment were to pass, it would effectively make the middle and high schools have to go remote after Thanksgiving. Mr. Kroto.
Would we, would we consider CRT as a separate entity, or would that be just stepping into mud that we don't want to step into?
Well, any remote was, was the understanding would be, it would be the pattern of remote that was in the spring, I mean, in the fall, in September, where CRTC came, special ed kids came, ELL kids came. Those populations would never be remote, well, right.
Provided those, provided those teachers would not travel and would be able to...
Yeah, it's not a separate entity when it comes to quarantine. If a special ed teacher needs to quarantine, those, the...
Right, but I mean, if Superintendent Murphy can't field the team for the high school...
Well, it depends on the teachers.
And I agree. But I'm just saying, yeah, you know, worst-case scenario. Does that necessarily mean that CRTC has to close with them even if they've got enough people to field the team?
No, I wouldn't think so.
No, I would not think so. We wouldn't require it, it would be the superintendent to be able to determine whether or not they could continue to function.
Okay.
So the difference in this one is, is that you're closing because we don't have enough staff. You're not, those programs, the special ed, ELL, and CRTC. So think about it like that. You're not being, you're not able to open it up and have students in because your staff issues, not your, not, not because of the safety issues, because the rest of the staff is, will be in for, the elementary will be in for safety, they'll be in, right? Safety will be in place, but it's that we have the staff to cover elementary.
Now, what about, so, occasionally the German teacher has to quarantine, but the French teachers and the Spanish teachers don't, like, if it's only two or three teachers that need to stay home or whatever...
One of the things, when we did the survey, we just had, you know, we did totals. We didn't do like the Spanish teacher, the French teacher, the, so we're, you know, and don't, and remember, we did this a couple of weeks ago, how many people are reconsidering their travel arrangements, given the, given the spike in the number of cases? So it is, even that is a moving target, to be honest with you. It's a moving target. I'd like you to be able to give me, I understand what you want, and it's very clear to me. I know I need to get the information out to the parents ASAP so that they can make plans, although the high school, it's a little bit easier because they're older, and we would, you know, move forward, but let us redo and relook at that information specifically to the, to the program. CRTC, as far as I know from Steve, he's in really good shape. He's not had any staffing problems.
Okay. That's all I wanted to do, is clarify. Thank you.
And I hate to throw another thing in this, but since we're talking about two weeks of remote anyway, would there be any interest in sort of following the new state protocol and saying seven days with the test so that we would close November 30th through December, we would go remote November 30th through December 4th, and then again to January 5th?
Families have to do, families have to do two weeks. Now we're getting way too confusing. This is, yeah, we need to, maybe we just go back to the original motion, we call the question, and we see what happens. We can't, we can't predict every little thing. This, I'm not upset with you, but this is what happens. Now there's 50 things. Never...
So, yeah, it's a good point, is that the seven days is in quarantine, right? Then you take the test, and then the test doesn't come back right away unless they take a, one of the, you know, the quick tests. A lot of people take the other test, it's been taking two or three days to get the results.
So, at this point, I am inclined to call the, first of all, do you still, we have an amendment on the floor.
Are you going to keep that amendment or not? Would you like to withdraw it? It's going to get complicated.
I, I am inclined to call the vote on the amendment, and we'll go from there.
Just on the amendment?
Just as the vote on the amendment, that would require any staff that travel to follow state guidelines upon their return. So...
I actually feel like that should just be part of the motion.
So, well, it has to be amended to be part of your motion, it needs to be amended. So let's vote on it right now. So if you would please call the vote on the amendment?
So we're just voting on...
Just on the amendment.
Right. So Gina?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Pamela?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
David?
No.
Chuck?
No, because there are too many unanswered questions about sick time and things like that for teachers. So I'm voting no on people who traveled and things of that nature, and plus there are HR rules, I'm not...
Okay, just yes or no? Just yes or no, sweetie, that's okay.
Hey, Barb.
And I'm going to vote, we're not done, Chuck, we're not done voting, honey. And I say yes, so...
I didn't vote, I didn't...
Oh, I thought you said no.
I didn't say no. I was talking, and I said I'm going to vote no, but I never said no.
No, this is just the amendment, this is just the amendment.
Barb, I'm fully understanding what we're voting on. Let me be clear, I'm talking. First of all, let me finish my sentence. I'm voting no when I was stating the reasons why. You get your time to talk, Barb, I'm getting mine.
We don't talk and vote, that's all. It's okay.
All right.
Good Lord.
So are we clear on Mr. Crush's vote?
No. Did he say no to the amendment?
Mr. Crush, did you vote aye or no?
I voted no to the amendment. Let me be clear.
Okay, thank you.
And I vote yes, that I think we should keep the amendment. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes, and two, no.
So the amendment, the amendment to, the motion passes. So the motion as it stands now is for us, for the school district to go remote from January the 4th, I believe, through the 15th. Is that correct? And that everybody, and that all...
The motion is that we remain hybrid for, from, yeah, right.
We would be hybrid. So we would go, we would go, the motion is that we would go remote from the January 4th through January 15th, and that all staff that travel would be required to follow state guidelines regarding such travel.
My motion was that we would be hybrid from Thanksgiving to Christmas break, and that with the, with the teachers needing to test, and that following Christmas break, we would be remote until the 18th.
Okay, so we are, but we already are hybrid, so we would be remaining hybrid. Okay, so we can make it that.
I mean, that's how I said it.
Okay, so you can remain hybrid through, through December, twenty, through the December vacation, and then that would, they go remote, and that traveled during any of that timeframe would be required.
Correct.
Okay, yes, Liza?
I just want to add a tiny caveat, which is, as we did this summer, include somehow in, and I don't know if we need another amendment, or if it's just common sense, but of course, if things change and we end up having to go remote, right? So, how to word that, but...
Yeah, I believe that would supersede it.
Yeah, that would supersede any motion, because, yeah.
Right, but I think it's kind of nice to have it in the language so that, you know, it's contingent...
So you're, you're proposing an amendment that would say unless, no, unless it would be superseded...
That's what we did last summer. We said, this is what we want to do, we will make changes if circumstances require it.
Okay, so you're making a second amendment, and you're amending it again to just say to include that, because we have to vote on that.
Yeah, okay, never mind.
No?
Do people think it's important? Maybe it's not.
I think she has no choice to go remote if, like, it...
Right, okay.
Okay, per, got it.
Sorry, I'm pointing at you.
All right, so, so we are voting on the motion to remain hybrid through the Christmas break, and that we would go remote from January the 4th through the 15th, and require that any teachers or staff, any personnel in the school that travel to follow the state guidelines regarding such travel during that timeframe. Is that correct?
Yep.
All right, so at that point, I think we need to call a vote on that.
Okay. Gina?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Pamela?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
Liza?
Yes.
Danielle?
No.
David?
Yes.
Chuck?
No.
And I say yes. One, two, three. So the motion passes, five yes, four no.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
I make a motion to Jaren?
It's through a second.
I'll second it.
No.
Yes? Go ahead, wait, let's go, say.
I mean, we...
I'll second it.
Yes. Go ahead, wait. That's what I was going to say.
I mean, we, I would like to know a plan for coming back to address the matrix issue and the remote switch, families that want to switch to remote issue. And maybe I'm just new and over eager, but I feel like those shouldn't wait three weeks.
And that could be put out, would that be an instructional committee discussion? Or would that be an admin, admin thing that you would just come present?
So before we adjourn, let's talk about scheduling with regards to the topics that came up, and that Ms. Walsh just very articulately exposed, the ones regarding the matrix, and as well as the, the, I guess it would be the opportunity or the, the procedure for those folks who, who would want to go remote. There are a few things we left hanging today that I, that we may want to address, so let's talk schedule. What do we have? We have a, we already have an instructional, we already have an instructional committee meeting coming up on the 18th.
Right.
Would that be the appropriate place to discuss this?
It's a busy meeting already.
You, you have to, you have another hill to climb, and that would be athletics.
Yes, we have, we have a...
So I would not put anything else on that agenda for instruction. There is also, you have to look at the calendar for 21, 22...
We don't need to pick that date right now, but you're right.
I wonder if we could let the superintendent come up with some dates and have her communicate that through an email to all of us, and we can weigh in at that point.
That sounds good.
Because I have a good handle, I have a good handle on what you want us to look at, you know?
Yeah.
The, the trigger points, the, the remote kids, the nursing staff. I have a whole list of things that you brought up tonight that I'll address.
So we may need another full board meeting, because as Ms. Walsh said, when we get to January the 4th, is it, that we're, our next meeting will be the first Monday in January? We will be awfully close to the second semester to be able to make a decision.
Right.
And actually, we'll be well past...
Right, but, but you have...
Oh, we have, I'm sorry, the, the December, the, I don't know which date is December.
You have December dates that you could use.
I know, we'd have to, but even...
Yeah, you have December...
All right, I got to go to my, I got to go to my calendar. That we would be into December 7th, I believe, is our meeting. And that, that would be so far into this period where some families at post Thanksgiving would want to go remote, that we would essentially have taken that away from them. So, we need to talk about a meeting before November the 25th, if we are going to address that particular issue. Am I correct in that timing? Yes. So, for families to be able to make a decision to go, you know, to go remote on, right after Thanksgiving, we would have to have a procedure, or at least have an understanding of how they would let the principals know. And this could be a sizable number of people based on our discussion, or our comments tonight. We'd have to have a procedure for them before the beginning of Thanksgiving. So I believe that's the concern. So, do we want to schedule this with the instructional committee, or do we want to create a different meeting?
Well, I think we, we could do it with the instructional meeting. I mean, we're just going to propose a plan about how a family would request remote, and how we're going to implement that. That's all. I mean, we'll get on that, we'll get on that tomorrow with our principals.
Okay. So if we could get some information out before that meeting, which is, is the meeting on the 16th or the 18th next?
Eighteenth.
The 18th, I thought. So if we could get some information on that before the 18th, so that if the committee, if we were, some, we wanted to bring it to the committee, at that point, we could, is that possible? Can we get some information on that?
Right. We'll have it for you for instructional...
Is the board comfortable with that timeframe?
I'm working up to death.
You're, I am working you to death.
November 18th or...
November 18th, because this would have to be a situation that is unresolved, that we have unresolved right now prior to Thanksgiving, but it would have to be an option for families immediately after Thanksgiving. Ms. Walsh?
That works for me. I think we also need to be able to have a, a new protocol, matrix then as well.
So can we have a, can we get a clarified or a, a new matrix protocol for calling it that we could observe by then? Can you get that done?
Yes.
Okay. Then I am, is everyone good with that timeframe? All right. Mr. Parker?
I can't do it anymore.
Mr. Parker?
You're an elected official. You're elected.
He's checked out.
I know.
I'm worried about the superintendent.
Well, she has said she can do it. All right, with that, is there anything, anything else, any other business anyone would like to bring forward? In this case, Mr. Kroto, I will entertain your motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Higgins.
No one can talk.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.